All right, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council Tuesday, October 14th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, reminder to everybody, we're going to speak loudly because we only have the one microphone.
Counselor Cammido.
Present.
Counselor Burke.
Present.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor Dimadere.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Paul.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
All present.
All right, Solicitor is present too. Let's go.
Tell him to speak loud.
Mr. Solicitor, we're speaking loudly because this is our only microphone. Okay, first up on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would any members of the council like to pull any items off of the consent agenda as listed?
Mr. President, four C four.
Four C four by Counselor Perry.
And for D one and two.
For D one and two. All right. Like to entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded, or motion by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? None opposed. All right, Counselor Perry, four C four.
Yes. This was on the review of the budget process for the Tiverton forensic audit that was done a while back. I'm not sure if the schools have gotten their copy already or not, but I think we need to set up a meeting or workshop or something with the schools so we could see if, you know, these are being adhered to. The new processes that were discussed. And maybe we can even get the people who did the forensic audit to come down and go over it with us.
That's what I was going to suggest, maybe the person, because I read it twice. And there's a lot of suggestions in here, and maybe if we all get together and see what's the best for all of us. And if the auditor explains some of the questions you may have.
Okay, perfect. Any, Counselor?
Was it the same auditor that sat in front of us last time?
No.
No, no, this is the one, this is the one that we hired for the school department's audit.
Just want to make sure.
So do you want me to make a motion to have a special workshop?
Uh, no, I think we can just do it based off of consensus that the administrator can work with the counterparts on the school side. To have, have a further discussion. Counselor Dimadere's D one and two.
These are the resolutions, and I just wanted to know your feelings and whether or not we want to support these and send them to the general assembly. The one is the general revenue sharing. Any opinions? John?
So I would mention that we have, prior councils have done this before, so I would be open to putting this on a future agenda. Okay, there's consensus.
Did we not already do this one?
I don't know if we, we did it last year.
Yeah, last session we did.
But can we just make the motion tonight to do it?
I think we have to draft our resolution.
Yeah, to draft a resolution?
Mr. Solicitor, you can see consensus on the general revenue sharing item. We can have that on the next agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And then the second resolution, Counselor Dimadere.
For D two, resolution preserving the name, significance, and observance of Victory Day. How do you all feel about this? Should we support this? I feel we should, but I don't know how.
Yeah, right, great. I wouldn't, I, myself.
Mike, do you have any?
I'm neutral.
You're neutral?
So I would, I would say I'm happy, I'm happy to support it. I think Victory Day is one of the quirky things that makes Rhode Island Rhode Island, so there's no reason in eliminating it. So if there's consensus, I think we can have the Solicitor draft a similar memo or a resolution.
And have it done next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on D one or two? Hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve four C four and four D one and two.
Second.
Motion been made by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Dimadere. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? None opposed. Do we have public comment signups, Madam Clerk?
Turkey sandwich. Is anyone kidding me? Turkey sandwich.
All right.
Turkey sandwich.
EDC Chair Jones. And as usual, name and address for the record.
Lady Jones, 161 Highland Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. Please be careful with these when passing them out to people who look.
Oh, we can't keep them?
They don't have their names on them. But I just wanted to show you what we've, what we've done. And I want to thank Councilmember David Paul for his constructive suggestion. We were able to have business on Meredith Brower from Tiverton's Farmers Market Design this welcome to Tiverton certificate that will be given to all our businesses in town. We've identified nine so far this year. As a little aside, one of the things that we have with new businesses coming in is that we don't always get notified that they're in. We have no idea if they've come into town or not, depending on what their procedure is in terms of licensing. So that's one of the issues that I wish we could figure out a way to do that so we could not have to find them by chance. So we identified nine that have opened so far this year. The calligraphy was actually done by Susan Anderson on the Historic Advisory Board. And we need to ask you to sign them and then find a place where you can leave them so I can pick them up to be distributed. They're going to go to the businesses with the welcome gifts. I also want to thank Administrator Jones for help at the Middle Avenue gazebo in Olympia. We are finally able to use our $5,000 grant to have an electrical outlet put in so the wires can not go across the road to neighbors' homes so that we can light the annual Christmas tree and the holiday lights. This is, was, I have organized the W W W with Sylvia and electric inspector, an electrician has been hired. And Patrick Jones and I will hopefully have this completed by December.
That's a high goal.
Thank you. This $5,000 has been sitting in an account for a number of years because it will allow us to celebrate other events such as the upcoming 250th year of Independence celebration as well as concerts that we used to have before COVID. Finally, I had a meeting with Rhode Island Commerce, Lisa Carnevalley, Vice President of Innovative Initiatives, Ashen Madere, Ocean Tech Hub Director, and Will Cox, Vice President of Business Development Investments, to talk about businesses in Tiverton, the Business Park, and recruiting new businesses for empty spaces in North Tiverton. What came out of this was interesting because as part of John Hardman, who you have met, this was two months ago that he had, but apparently there is a gentleman named John Hardman.
One word.
Tiverton resident on our budget committee who also works at Rhode Island Commerce. So when he found out that I was up there, we've already had a meeting. He's interested in being on the EDC, but he's already had a business conflict until he can only be on my ticket yesterday. So he can be, he can be an advisor or he can choose to be off. And that's all I had to say. I just wanted to catch you up on some things that we've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you think we could fix that situation where you know where the new businesses are?
No, it depends on how they come in because some people, it's just like they come in and it's just they're renting a space. They don't need a license. They're just, you know, and we don't some of them, if they have to go for a license, that would be something that we could hear. I mean, John.
What do you think, Joan? Is there a way that? Because most businesses, you know when they come into town, right?
No.
No.
Only the ones that.
Only if they need licenses or.
Not the only town that has that problem because I really have spoken to like Milltown, Porthing. What do you do? I mean, if they have to have some kind of town license or permit or something, then, you know, we could talk to the building.
I'm just trying to find a way that we could help you.
No, I know. I wish, I, I'm trying to think of that and we need to put our, it's hard. I don't know.
Have we, Mr. Solicitor?
So some towns seek special legislation which would enable them for every business to have to register, it's a business registration within the town. That's what sometimes get a lot, but you need special legislation for that because it's technically a license.
It's a free license, but it's a license.
Sometimes charge, but.
I would not want to charge. But either, the other suggestion too would be to check in with the Newport Chamber because I know that they have active salespeople who are prospecting for new members, so that could be another good resource as well.
I go to the Chamber, we, so we've talked about it. But it's like catch or catch them, we just don't know.
Well, maybe we should look into that.
Renee, thank you. Those came out great.
Yeah, they are.
We know you guys care about the businesses, but that's one tangible way that we could show them. Present, I like that.
They're getting a present too?
Well, flowers.
Oh, okay. A little basket.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is the library director. Thank you.
Hello. So good evening and just a public service announcement. Tiverton Public Library anticipates soon beginning construction on an outdoor pathway that will run from our front sidewalk and all the way around the back of the building to the east lawn. So this project is fully funded by grants and donations. This year we were generously awarded $50,000 from the Champlin Foundation, $50,000 from the Van Buren Charitable Foundation. And also we had two generous donations, one from Tiverton Power for $6,000 and another from the John Clark Trust for $5,000. We recently completed the bid process and the trustees anticipate having this as an agenda item on their next Monday regular meeting agenda to discuss awarding of bid. And we began thinking about this process back in 2021. The possibility of installing an ADA accessible pathway was something on our minds after the success of our kids' story walk program. That year we worked with David Fearbrand of Grounds Walton Design Group and they helped us envision the potential for the space and brought us a concept design. The following year we contracted with Shannon Rose of Outdoor Learning and Classroom Design Company, Thrive Outside, which is a local business on Quinney Island. And also landscape architect Joseph James of Apomnes Practice. They helped us put together planning documents that could be sent to grant agencies and donors. And as you can probably guess, that was really successful. So this project is the culmination of the efforts of many, but a special thanks should go to Tiverton Library Foundation for their assistance with grant writing and fundraising. And the path will allow for outdoor programming. We're excited for this improvement to be enjoyed by many for years to come. Just a public service announcement in case some folks start to see some things being dug up around the library.
Thank you very much.
It'll be on Tiverton Happenings tomorrow.
Do it.
Thank you. All right, next item is appointments and resignations. We have a number of resignations. I'm going to read them off and then I'll entertain a motion to accept all of them with regret.
Yeah, I did have a question.
Oh, for the director?
No, for the resignation.
Okay. All right, so first up we have Clint Clemmons resigning from the Harbor Commission effective July 22nd, 2025. Susan Rodriguez from the Open Space Committee effective September 13th, 2025. Stu Gilfillan from the Semi-Quintcentennial Commission effective September 16th, 2025. Mary Wall from the Budget Committee effective September 5th, 2025. Chris Dobirstein from the Budget Committee effective September 5th, 2025. And Abigail Desprees from the Budget Committee effective September 5th, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept these resignations with regret and thank them for their service?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, Counselor Dimadere.
I just have, I don't know if you've all read six A, but it wasn't clear to me if Clint Clemmons quit as chairman or.
No, he quit.
No, he's.
He had personal reasons to have to.
All right, because there is a resignation letter really from him. It's just from the Harbor Commission.
No, he had sent something.
A while ago, okay.
Yeah.
And then as far as Stu leaving the semi, do I have to say the word?
Semi-quintcentennial.
We do need another recreation person and apparently according to the letter Stu gave us, there was not really anyone interested. So we may have to change that resolution to not have a recreation person on there if we can't get one.
Yeah, I don't know who's left on that committee because.
I was just going to ask that.
I don't think there's as many people left.
That was my next, is there a quorum? Is there a, I don't know.
I got more to the chloroform.
So for the, for the benefit of the council, I have brought this up and had some discussions with the administrator. And he's going to work with myself and the vice chair to come up with a plan that we can put in action to get this committee moving in the right direction again.
And then we have three resignations for the Budget Committee, which I think seven is, is the number. So now we only have four. We barely have a quorum. So anyone out there who's interested in joining the Budget Committee, please do so because if one person is out, they don't have a quorum for next year. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, none opposed. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinance as Chapter 66102 Recycling Coordinator Recycling Committee. Proposed ordinance amendment will modify Section 66102 Recycling Coordinator Recycling and eliminate the recycling committee from the town ordinance. This was discussed at a prior meeting. I'd like to open up the public hearing. Would any members of the public like to speak on this proposed change? Any members of the public? Any members of the public? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing. Any questions from the council or do I have a motion to approve the proposed amendments as written? Motion been made. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? None opposed. All right, next item, our next public hearing is approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinance's Appendix A Zoning Article Two, Definition Seven, Article Four, Section Four, District Use Regulations, Public and Semi-Public Uses, Article Six, Eight, Section Ten, Other District Regulations, Regulations, Performance Criteria. This says it relates to a cat shelter. Do I like to open up the public hearing? Any members of the public like to speak about this proposed change? By all means, please come forward and just state your name and address for the record. Preferably loudly because we only have the one microphone. I'm not normally this loud.
Really?
Let them believe.
My name's Amanda Souza, 137 Main Road in Tiverton. I don't know why I get nervous. I've done this like 85 times by now, but.
You do not need to be nervous.
So I'm just going to read what I kind of have here. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Amanda and I'm here on behalf of Baja's Rescue, a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit located here in Tiverton. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in approving the ordinance that will allow Baja's Rescue to move forward with state approval from, through the Department of Environmental Management. This ordinance is the final step we need before our space can be inspected and licensed to officially begin rescue operations. As it stands, there are no formal arrangements in place for cats within the town of Tiverton. Residents currently have nowhere local to turn when they find stray or need to surrender a cat. This has left a significant gap in animal care within our community. Baja's Rescue will fill that gap in a way that is humane, regulated, and cost-effective for the town. We will operate under strict D E M guidelines that include proper housing, sanitation, intake procedures, and medical care for every cat that comes through our doors. We will have designated holding periods for stray or surrendered cats before any adoption or rehoming process begins. During that time, we will ensure all animals receive necessary veterinarian care, vaccines, spay or neuter surgeries, and microchipping, all at no cost to the town of Tiverton. I can't, I can't stress that enough. There will be no cost to the town of Tiverton for us to work with you whatsoever. Our rescue will be funded entirely through community donations, fundraising, and adoption fees. Again, the town will not be billed ever for services or animal care. The benefits to Tiverton are substantial. Residents will finally have a local humane option for cats in need. The town will see a reduced stray population and fewer welfare complaints. All animals will be cared for under state-approved conditions, ensuring safety and compliance. The program promotes responsible pet ownership and community involvement. Baja's Rescue isn't just about saving cats. It's about providing Tiverton residents with the compassionate, structured, and affordable animal welfare support our town has been missing. We're not asking for funding only for the approval to move forward responsibly with the D E M process. This will allow us to officially open our rescue doors, operate legally, and help Tiverton cats and residents in a way that truly benefits everyone. Thank you for your time and support in supporting humane, community-based, and whole care.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to speak on this proposed ordinance change? Any other members of the public? Any other members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion from Counselor Janik?
I just would like to say that this came before the rezoning commission and it was pushed forward because we had an applicant who really was passionate about opening this, this rescue. All of the information that's in your packet, all of this zoning, all the regulations come directly from D E M. So it's all state-run, state-mandated, and Amanda worked very closely with them. So we have adopted all of the state regulations and as she said, there will be no cost to the town of Tiverton. But it really is a service that is needed in our town. Many, many stray cats, many sick cats. And Amanda will meld this with the business that she has. They will be two separate businesses under two separate regulations, but she's very willing and passionate about taking this on, so I hope that we can support this.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the ordinances as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Counselor Perry, seconded by Counselor Janik and Counselor Perry.
So, so record is clear. It's B one, two, and three, avoiding all on that.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing, Counselor Cammido.
Yeah, so can we so the, can we just go over the zoning areas that we picked? Or like so.
General conversation.
Right. So TMS, PFE, and NB.
Neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business.
Pedestrian friendly. And, what was the last?
Traditional main street.
Traditional main street, sorry.
Okay, so anybody in, anybody?
And that's, so that's Main Street, Main Road from Souza Road. If you look at the zoning map, it's a little pink strip. It goes all the way up to, I believe, the Fall River Line.
So it's automatically permitted in those areas?
As, as a piece, right.
Yes. And if they meet all of the criteria in the zoning.
Right.
So it was very specific. This is cats, not any other animals. With, with dogs, you need to have outdoor space, running space. You don't need that with cats, so this is very specific to cat rescue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? None opposed? Amanda, go get licensed. Thank you. All right, general business. We have a discussion, impossible vote to accept and adopt the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan update. This is not a small plan.
It took me an hour.
Do we have any questions from the council? Counselor Burke.
I have a couple, Chief.
I'll be right back.
Right here.
Thank you, Chief. This is a very thick plan, very well thought out, and you have preliminary approvals on this. This is the last step.
So it's been approved through REMA and went through the federal agency management and we had to work through some edits and they've given us approval. It needs adoption by resolution by the council.
Yep, okay. So on page 10, I have a couple of questions. It's in the chart area at the bottom of the planning regulatory. I'm going to vote to approve this provided that everybody else does. But I do have a concern when we state it here in a plan like this, that we're going to be using gaming money. Because while we're doing that, it doesn't mean that it's going to be used all the time.
Right.
So, you know, in the future, Patrick, if we can just kind of, and later on, you have something about a capital plan. I think that language was better for this than in that regard. Then you have three plans that have an end to it there. Climate change adaptation, community wildlife protection, and continuity of operations. I'm assuming those were not required for the R E M and the feds. But are we going to be working on those, especially continuity of operations?
Yes.
Okay. And then on page 11, similarly, you have a substantial damage plan. That is an N, I believe. So will that be worked on as well?
I believe at some point, probably after the continuity of operations.
Okay. And then lastly, on page 13.
This was so big.
It talks about, this is the education outreach, and you have an N next to organizations that represent advocate for advocacy for interaction with undeserved and vulnerable communities. So just a couple thoughts on that because, you know, senior services, I'm not sure who covers, who has senior case management for this region, but Janet probably will know. If not, EDCAP would know because I know they have Central Falls, they used to at least at Central Falls in Pawtucket area. Also, EDCAP is really good to reach out around other vulnerable populations as well as the Department of Health, and certainly Janet's a good resource there with the senior side. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Paul?
Chief, I just have one question or one correction on page three. Before this gets finalized, Christopher Carter, John Hoyle, Patrick Jones, Police Chief, Rick Rogers, Director.
That was the actual planning team that was in place when this began.
Yeah.
So this started in March of 2024, so in the initial planning meeting, this was the actual team that initiated working on the plan.
Yeah.
Does that have to stay that way or does that get updated?
I believe it's because that was the, the planning team that was in place right at that time.
Okay, any further questions from Chief? Counselor Perry.
I agree with Mr. Counselor Burke. You're going to make the corrections on the ends, whys and the ends, correct?
It will work. It will be worked on.
So why don't we take out on page 10, gambling money is allocated annually for Capital Islands. Let's take that right out.
So my suggestion, Counselor, was, was not to make changes, but just to recognize that going forward.
Well, I, I think it's simple enough to make the change. You must have this on.
My one concern is will that then require to go back through R E M and through the feds?
Yes.
It would.
All right, forget that then.
It's just approved by both of those agencies.
Right, and I know for us, those are important, but for them, you know, they're going to take, they're not going to spend a lot of time trying to get, work through it quickly, probably.
But just to be clear, I mean, if we approve this plan with, for instance, the gaming monies, we're not beholden to that?
Right.
Okay.
It's just when they asked, like, how do we fund capital improvement plans? I said that a lot of it comes out of gaming.
And that's not inaccurate, so.
So I think that's how I found it, it's way.
Makes total sense to me. Thank you, Chief. Any further questions, Counselor Perry?
Will this be updated again?
Five years. So it's, at the moment, you guys passed this and adopted by that resolution that's in the packet and has to be done that way. It starts a five-year timeline. We also had a grant to pay for 90% of the consulting fees and we can start submitting now to recoup 90% of the money that we've spent on this plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept and adopt the 2025 Tiverton Hazard Mitigation Plan and Updates?
The resolution or the plan? Plan. Further resolution?
Plan.
Okay. We have a resolution before us. There's no, there's no resolution.
Yeah. Motion been made by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? None opposed? Next item is David Santana, borderline takeout. Discussion, impossible vote to approve 30-minute parking limit on State Avenue from the corner of Main Road to parking lot driveway on State Avenue approximately 56 feet with a recommendation from our police chief. Is Mr. Santana present? If not, I defer to the chief.
Hi.
Hello, Chief.
I did meet with Mr. Santana on September 16th, I believe. As you know, he runs a new restaurant in the area. He is looking for a 30-minute parking sign on State Avenue from Main Road going eastbound on the side of his business. There is currently a sign there that says 15-minute parking, although I researched this, the court has researched this, and we don't know who put that sign there or who put it up.
No, when you said it.
I believe Counselor Paul did 20 years ago, just of his own volition.
I, I agree.
And it looks official, though.
It's us. We don't know where.
Because I went by there.
So in speaking with him, I think it would be acceptable and I have no problem with it, with a sign that would be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. it, with a sign that would be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. allowing 30-minute parking. I believe the 8:00 p.m. uh, cutoff time is sufficient, this way it allows for residents and neighborhood if they need to handle their parking.
Okay. Any further questions from the council? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, uh, the parking changes as recommended by the Chief.
We need an ordinance.
We need an ordinance?
So that's, I guess you're authorizing me to do the ordinance.
Then I'd like to, uh, do we need a motion for that?
Motion to authorize solicitor to. I have a question about the Chief, I can call him later.
Second.
So is this a, uh, I don't know, is it east-western or south, what side of the street?
It is on the south side.
Eastbound.
South side.
It is on State Ave.
Yep.
On the south side of State Ave.
Oh.
It's the eastbound lane.
And it runs.
It's east, east.
We'll hit the director. Talk to the Chief, Paul.
I've got, I've got it locked up.
All right, so we have a motion to direct the solicitor to.
30-minute parking on.
No, I mean, no.
No.
No, on State.
State Ave.
Oh, sorry, State.
On State Ave.
Yeah, he is, there's benches and stuff there, it looks, I mean, he's taking care of the sidewalk. It's the south side of State Ave.
South side of State. You were right.
I appreciate it.
I don't know myself, and I don't know.
The Rising Sun.
He wants it so that people.
I see what he wants.
Because that's where his door is. He wants it so they can park and come in, right now.
His door is on Main Road.
Yes, so if you pass by, if you're headed north to Fall River, you pass by his bor, his door, you take a right from the corner to, there's a driveway, 56 feet, that's where he wants, on the right-hand side, that's where he wants the sign.
But he's right, the door is on Main Road.
It is, but it's right at that corner.
Yeah.
You could have the door on Main Road.
No, I talked to him about parking across the street, maybe sharing parking with the other restaurant, he feels that it's too dangerous for his patrons to cross the street.
So you're asking the two businesses to share a parking lot that's owned by one business?
That never works.
I know if I owned the business, I would want it.
And it's in forever, too.
Not the Chinese.
Oh.
The dirt lot is in Fall River.
Oh, all right, all right.
Who's on first?
All right, so just to recap, we have a motion to direct the solicitor to draft the ordinance changes, and then, you're gonna advertise them? And advertise from the clerk for public hearing so that we can adopt these changes. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you, Chief.
See you in an hour.
We're gonna move expeditiously. Um, next item on the agenda, Counselor Janik, discussion and review of potential amendments to the demolition ordinance, section 18 dash 67, as sought by Tiverton Historic Preservation Advisory Board, AKA Susan Anderson, related to historic buildings. Everyone should have received this memorandum from the solicitor.
Oh, no, we got it.
I know it was sent via email over the weekend as well.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
So, just to give you.
Counselor Janik.
To give you the backup, the history, when the Lafayette House was torn down, everyone was asking, don't we have an ordinance that, that protects these buildings, the historic buildings? And lo and behold, we did not find an ordinance. The Historical Preservation Commission felt that they had drafted something decades ago, had sent it to the council, and it couldn't be found. So they did have people from the state come down to talk about what is necessary. And what they did tell us at that time was that we needed to draft something about historical buildings and preservation, um, demolition, and whatever the town of Tiverton decided for an ordinance, it had to be then sent to the state level because it was historic. So my request was actually to advertise for a public hearing, because if we are going to write an ordinance for historical, um, preservation, demolition, we will need to have a public hearing for that. The Preservation Commission did draft something, which they sent back to us in July. I wasn't at that meeting, um, it came back to them with some questions, some changes, which they did make, sent it back, which is what I attached to my, um, request, so that you do have that with their update, um, on demolition.
So Counselor Janik, if.
I'm sorry, is, is this, this whole packet, that's what they recommended?
That is what they recommended, yes. So apparently, the initial ordinance that they were recommending discussed demolition of all homes, all buildings, structures in Tiverton, and historic, because there was not an ordinance for regular non-historic buildings. In discussion with Tom, he felt that he goes by the state regulations, so he doesn't need a town ordinance, because he uses the state ordinance. So they took all of that out, because their purview is really only historical buildings. They took all of that out, they did tweak a couple of things that were questionable, and this is what they sent back.
So if I could just add, um, cause I do recall, Counselor Janik, you were not present at that meeting?
Correct.
Part of the, um, part of the issues that came up in that meeting was that there needs to be a definitive process around what becomes historical. Ostensibly, the way the Historic Preservation Commission works today is, they come up with a list and just kind of throw it out there. So as an example, right, during that meeting, I was flipping through and like, I recognized addresses, my parents' house was on there. No one's ever actually talked to my parents or mentioned to them that it's historic preservation. And part of the consternation that the council had in your absence was that this could sort of spiral out of control. People do have a right to do sort of what they want with their buildings. It's not like in Newport, where they have a defined area as a historic district.
Which we don't have.
Which we don't have, because we're very disparate.
What's that trying to do with this?
Well, in a way, they are, but.
Well, it says area, historical area, and if you fit in that historic, you can take a vote and say it's an historical house.
Yeah, I.
So some of the discussion that came up at their meeting, the last couple of meetings, was, my question, do these people even know they live in a historical home?
They do not.
And some of them do not. So they started to put together a list and to send out, um, informational packets to them, and see if they were interested in obtaining a plaque, which they do, um, have manufactured for people's homes that say historical and what the date is. Um, and so they're working on drafting that letter and to send that out to these homes that they have on the list. I do agree that some of the, the criteria is a little subjective, and we might need to tweak that a bit, and going to public hearing, people may talk about that, and that may help in tweaking some of the language.
So just one piece to add here on that as well, about the placards, cause that did also come up at the meeting. Um, like, I know of one house right offhand that they, the actual historic home is basically a foundation, that's all that's left on the property, it's not the actual house. And they attempted to get a plaque, and once it was discovered that it's essentially ruined at this point, that was the last time the historic preservation, you know, even bothered to answer their phone call. So I think we have some process stuff that absolutely needs to be worked out first, and then as far as defining an area, because of the location of where these homes are, it's, you're essentially defining Tiverton. And that in and of itself, to me, is exceptionally problematic. So it, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we, today, we would go off of something like the National Historic Register.
Right.
And if we're using that, I have no problem, because that's a National Historic Register, but if it's just down to, you know, the, for lack of a better term, the whims of, uh, you know, committee, then in my opinion, that's, that could become problematic.
By a simple majority vote.
Yeah, is there, if I say something?
Counselor DiMedeiros, my apologies.
No, 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 it's all right, I've been involved in this forever, but, um, I don't think you can just drive by a house and call it historical, and say it's 75 years old, so it's historical. Nobody, if these people don't know they're in an historical home, and the building inspector doesn't know it's an historical home, and they've done major renovations inside, gotten rid of woodwork and floors, it's no longer really historical.
And I think that's recognized.
But what I think is, we should just go with historical, um, if, if somebody wants their house to be put on the reg, registry, they need to go to the state, get it put on the registry, and now it's historical. But some of these, I don't think we should just leave it up to that committee. Also, by reading this, um, they're an advisory board, and some of, like, them deciding, um, if it's historical, how long it's gonna take, proof comes to them. I don't, the building inspector should be more involved in this ordinance than it really is. Um, and then also, at the end of all of this, there's no appeals process. So if the historic, say the historic committee says, no, you can't do a demolition or whatever, there's no appeals process, it doesn't even say, you can go to the building inspector or the council to appeal, um, to appeal this. Also, I think that the six-month is way too long, I really do. Um, I think that six-month period isn't fair to the people who wanna do.
If you're in non-compliance, you, there's a two-year period that you can.
Right, right, and I, I, I just think this is, I don't like this ordinance at all, or the potential for this to be an ordinance, but I really do have a problem, and, and there's an advisory committee here, that if you read this, has a lot of power, and there's no one overseeing it, and there's no appeals process, and I'm still not comfortable in what makes a building historical.
So if I can just.
Counselor Janik.
This is, this is like a first, it's probably a second draft sent through, and so the request is for a public hearing so that we can get feedback from people, put, and put in appeals process, put in whatever, whatever we need to put in, but it's just, it's a draft, so that we can make changes to it as we need to make changes. The other thing is, we're not looking to put in a historical district, because we know that that's not passed and it's failed in the, the past, but what the state people did say is, in Pawtucket, they have, the building that they're in, the historical state people are in, is historical, like, district, and it's only one building, you only need one building, you don't need like a whole district like in Newport, or, you know, some of those other cities or towns, so we're not looking to make a whole neighborhood historical, just, the goal, the goal is to preserve historical properties in, in town.
So if I, if I could just add, I mean, again, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's a, not an admirable goal, um, you know, the problem, I think, is that a lot of the feedback that you're getting now, Counselor Janik, on some of this stuff, was feedback that we gave at the last meeting, and it seems like the response was, we're gonna tweak one or two things, send it back up to the council, hope we're not paying attention, and we'll put it through a public hearing, so.
I don't think that's fair, John, I don't think that they were thinking you weren't paying attention.
Counsel, or, uh, Mr. Solicitor.
So I don't wanna, um, so I wanna correct a couple of things. We do have a demolition of historic buildings, ordinance on the books right now, it's 1867, and it does have a 90-day cooling, cooling-off period.
Yeah.
And houses that are on the, uh, Rhode Island Historic Preservation Commission, Entitled Historic and Architectural Resources of Tiverton, Rhode Island, and Plumb River Report published in 1983, those houses would be subject to this ordinance. Now, as we point out in this memo, which I must compliment my, someone in my office, cause I did not write this, I tweeted this, but, um, that, that ordinance may be questioned as well, whether they, you know, that we have a daily decision to do that, but it's, an ordinance is presumed valid until, um, it is challenged. So I'm not challenging that ordinance, I don't want me to say just to get upset, just to let you know that in this memo, we, we bring that up. However, what I don't wanna be accused of, of dragging my feet, as, as we put in this, as we outlined in this memo, there are a lot of policy considerations that need to be made, and I am not elected to make those decisions, you guys are. So we outlined the general framework with the law is today, how it could be improved, what kind of choices you make, I'm just looking for guidance. Um, and if, if it's the intent of the, Ms. Janik, to put the ordinance, has been drafted up to a public hearing, that's, I mean, that's your right to do so, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not fighting you on that, or not disagreeing, that's your right, and so, but we just outlined what, what the status is. Other, you're correct, other towns have individual houses, um, not necessarily the historic district, I think that's outlined here, this case law says you can do that, so, but it's a complicated process, it's not, it's not easy.
I understand, I understand, so.
So we're, we're willing to draft anything you guys want me to draft, we just need more feedback.
Yeah, we have this in town, but it never went to the state level.
When you said what, what is that, the, the 1867?
Yes, it never went to the state level, so.
Yeah, I.
And, and apparently, by state law, needs to go to the state for historical demolition.
I, I think that was a concern that was raised.
But it's not.
And I, and we can certainly get approval for this, if you need to do, but that's, that's not what was being asked for, that's part of what's being asked for, but that's not all of what's being asked for. But again, ordinance is deemed valid until it's challenged, but I think we did point out that there are other towns that do allow for particular houses, um, and you don't necessarily need a historic district. And there seems to be case law on, on both sides of that, but we came down that you don't need historic district. So we, we will draft, what, as we always do, we will draft anything you want, we just need guidance, we out, we laid out the policy considerations that are in this memo, um, it's dense, believe me, I read it three times, and it's very confusing to me at some point, but do whatever you want us to do.
Counselor.
It is very confusing, and we got this in the email Friday, and I got the hot copy today, so, at, at, at least-case scenario, I'd like more time to.
Yeah, I don't think this is.
Table this, or push it off or something, to understand this, and to definitely read the, the new law that's in the ordinance, cause this is.
It's preference.
I mean, cause the way this is written now, I, I can't support any of it at all right now, cause it's just.
I don't think it's ready for public hearing.
Going on, as far as somebody wanting to try to tear it down, or do a demolition, it's just.
So give me a list of what you feel is not, and I will bring that back to historic, historical committee, all the items that you listed.
Perhaps it would be better if we did a workshop with the Historical Advisory Committee as a council?
That's fine.
And that way, you know, we all can bring up our concerns, we can come to a position where there is some consensus, and then we can put it out for a public hearing at that point. Would that be amenable?
Yeah, that is agreeable.
One of the confusions that we did have, we did go back, look for the minutes of that meeting that you had with the, um, with the, with the person from the state, and.
Preserve Rhode Island?
Was that, I don't know if it was Preserve Rhode Island, or whatever, whatever it was, whatever, wherever it was, but we, we didn't have, there were no minutes to help guide us, so I didn't have.
No, it was a workshop, it wasn't a meeting.
You still have to.
We still have the minutes, but that's.
You still have to have minutes.
Should have, who was there?
I was told that if it was a workshop, we didn't have that minutes.
So perhaps we can ask that individual to join us for our joint workshop?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, so I'll, I'll reach out so we can get that scheduled.
Thank you.
So I make a motion to table, or should we just?
No, it's, this is just, we put it on for discussion because of the ordinance that the solicitor wanted, or the memo the solicitor wanted to have drafted, so, um, we'll just, we'll ha, we'll do the workshop, then we'll follow it up with putting it up for public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Administrator Jones, update on V D and their charging stations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Rock and roll music and bright lights.
Deja vu.
There's really not much of an update, I know we've been communicating back and forth, just to schedule a time for all of us to sit down, it's just coordinating schedules, I should have an update for the council by the next.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item, Administrator Jones, discussion impossible vote to award contract for Pecassid Hills Cemetery paving to the lowest responsive bidder in the best interest of the town. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, um, as part of your backup with the bid log sheet, um, we opened the bids, and as you can see, under number six, J and R and Sons, is the low bidder for $45,700. Um, we have had the discussions, I've also got a recommendation from the D P W Director, it's my recommendation to you, that you approve the bid for $45,700, so we can proceed forward with this job as soon as possible.
Question?
Counselor.
Patrick, it cracked me up, because the bids were as high as 249,000 to the 45,000, what was, why?
Well, you got two union shops here, first off.
Was that why?
Yeah.
It, it just seems odd to me.
I, I understand.
That it's over 200,000, and then, um, we're going for 45,000.
So, JR, I believe, is a local shop, so he probably doesn't have the overhead that these other people have. I've witnessed his work, and I think he does tremendous work.
Oh, no, I'm not saying he doesn't, but I just find-
Counselor DiMederos, I would, I think also, I don't know if they know, the DPW, where's the head? DPW prepped that area already.
Oh, okay.
All the prep work for paving is done. So, those people may not know that. They may have thrown that bid in there thinking that they were going to do the prep work also. But that is crazy.
Uh, yes, this is going to directly impact you, so I'd-
Oh, that's who this is.
Yeah.
You'd like to-
I'm sorry, but as far as I know, there was some kind of a walkthrough, right, by the contractors there?
Yes, sir.
So, they know.
Oh, so they should, okay.
They know. Okay, so, just advise me a little bit, what is the, what is the latest thing on this, on this pavement thing?
If we award the bid, they start paving.
Yes.
Right. Now, I was also mentioned, told somewhere that it's very possible that the contractor for the DPW would be able to do this job. That, well, right, well, that's what I heard. So, that's why I'm here. So, what's the-
So, the town has a business relationship or a contract for doing roadways. So, that's a little different, because this is a specific area of town property that's specific to the cemetery. So, they did speak with the DPW director and give us a price range if they were interested in doing it, but they did not bid officially on this job, sir. So, that company is exclusive to doing the roads. The other issue that came into a concern is, we want that company to focus on the roads. To take them off the job to do the cemetery would create a time delay, especially with what we're up against with the asphalt plans. So, that's why we left the bids, and I can tell you that J. and R. &amp; Sons is right in that, kind of that price point of where they were coming in as, as well.
No, I understand that, but I, I guess I, it must have been a rumor that, oh, some kind of-
There's no rumors in Tiverton, sir.
Someone told me that it's possible that the DPW was going to do it. And I was hopeful that they could do it. And also, we wanted to do the entrance road, like, someday, somebody's going to be driving that casket up there, and somebody's going to jump on it, because that road is going to be a few bumps that probably could be covered-
Sure.
Before the winter.
And, and please correct me, sir, and you can obviously, for the councils, you've had money allocated for this project for how many years?
Two.
Well, two or three years.
Okay. So, I know, and that money is about $75,000. So, this comes in and almost-
There's a little more to it. There's a little more.
Please, sir.
I tried to meet you that day, and unfortunately, you were booked. So, anyways, this, I'm sorry, you know, this, this probably would have been squared away a little more.
No worries.
Don't worry, it's not feeling well at the moment. So, what I'm getting at is that we were hoping that for the 75K, when we get a little more of, it's just paving that those gravel roads. That's all. And also, try to do something to the, to the main entrance road.
So, Mr. Administrator, if I could, I've had discussions with Bob Sedoma as the liaison. This money here, as Counselor DiMederos mentioned, I think, two years. There was a misconception that there was money allocated a few years back, and it wasn't. That was discovered, and then it was put in. That, this bid is strictly for just to open up that new area. In talking with Bob Sedoma, the hope would be that at least with the next gaming round, or even the next paving round, to at least try to get the in-and-out roads done. And then, the following year, this, the cross, the north-south crossroads. Can't be done in one shot. I mean, we'd be looking at the 249.
Well, yeah, we would like to get a little bit done on that old road, road going to the entrance. You just told me that can't be done, just yet.
Well, that wasn't part of the bid, was it? Correct.
Yeah.
How much did we allocate for this? I'm thinking-
Seventy-five thousand.
But I thought the plan was 75 one year, and then 75.
The 75 from that one year?
It was going to be 75 and 75.
Correct. It wasn't actually allocated. I dealt with this with Mr. Carter.
Okay. All right.
So, I think the plan, moving forward, and just for the council too, it's my recommendation that we award the bid to J. and R. &amp; Sons. Let's get them out there. Let's get started with something to improve before the season changes, that we can't do anything. And then, in speaking with them, they can coordinate with the DPW director, with you, sir, and your committee. And let's, and if there's money left, I would have no objections to rebidding what's left for that small portion, getting an idea that if it falls within the budget, and then coming back to the council and say that they could do it, and maybe do something in the spring, or when weather permits.
Okay.
Does that work for you, sir?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not the commission.
No, no, I understand, sir. No, no, I'm just-
Can't answer this either.
I understand.
Actually, unfortunately, this issue was not brought up to the commission during our meeting, which I think it should have been. Because as the commission, you know, there's five of us, and we all have different ideas, most of whom are good. And what, but to have one person, or have this done happening without the commission knowing, that, that kind of rubbers the wrong way, you know?
Yeah, now they know.
So, I mean, that's something that I can coordinate with your commission, moving forward.
I would dispute that the commission didn't know, because this goes back-
Yeah.
-two, three, four years, and the money was allocated, that they didn't know about that section needing to be paved. I want to say it was already cut out by DPW once, and then they finally prepped it recently.
Yeah.
So, they've been up there two or three times.
We were asked for the map. We never, we never received this map. This map here, which you have right now, we've never seen it.
I don't have that map.
That's been described to me as the new lots that are being sold. Is that what that is?
The commission has never seen this map.
Has the commission heard the new lot area, or new plot area?
That's what's going to be paved.
You knew about the new lot area, though. I've been, you know about the new lot area. The commission knows that-
Know what?
That there's a new lot area, that there's going to be further development out there.
Of course.
All right. And that needs to be paved.
Of course.
Okay. And that's what we're doing.
That's not my question. My concern is, and maybe this is a-
Sir, when's your next meeting? When's the commission meeting next?
Next.
The second Wednesday of the year.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And then that way, you come, you can square it all away.
Yeah.
I'll try.
If there's any discussion from your office with Bob Sedoma, or whoever, have everybody type it up, and email it to all the commission members. So, we are aware of what's going on.
I'll be at-
Well, that would be the-
So, so, just, just to clarify, so, if there's an issue as far as the commission and not getting information, or whatever, that's absolutely something you want to take up with the commission chair. But I'm going to use this opportunity to point out that inside of our charter, every single board and commission is beholden to one individual, and it's, and it's the administrator.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Whatever happened to this office, have everybody type it up, and email it to all the members. So, we are-
It's actually, it's, it's the other way around. The commission needs to send it to, to the administrator.
No, no. Whatever happened to your office-
Let's meet, sir. Let's meet. Let's meet.
We weren't aware of it sometimes.
I understand.
And that's what, that's why we have a dis-
I understand. We'll meet, sir.
I made my point.
Thank you. Please give our regards to Mr. Sedoma. Hope he feels better.
I definitely-
Thank you. All right. So, we have a recommendation from the administrator. Do I have a motion to approve the low bid of JR &amp; Sons?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? None opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, under myself, discussion impossible vote on the tall ship hosting for the 250th celebration. I see Mr. Gilfelin's in the back. We all received a letter from, I believe, the Harbor Commission, because Mr. Gilfelin is intimately involved with the tall ships and knows everything there is to know about them. He goes all the way up the main miz, and he's the man. And I believe that the board mistakenly took our accepting of the letter as tacit permission for us to move forward with this. So, since Mr. Gilfelin is here, if we could let them know that we received the request, but as of this moment, there are not dollars to install docks. So, we would be happy to, if the council pleases, I think, in conjunction with the fact that it's America's 250th birthday, this is something good to move forward to. But it would be something we need to fundraise for. If you want to come up, Mr. Gilfelin, because I'm sure you've, you and I have already spoken about this.
I also think that the police need to weigh in on-
I have a list of issues.
Yeah.
So, if I can offer up, we, I met with the Harbor Commission, and the captain of Oliver Hazard Perry, he's the official ship of Rhode Island, to look at potential locations in Tiverton, to see if it was even viable. And then, at that point, just because, again, the locations it would go into are under the purview of the Harbor Commission, asked if they would write a letter of support for you to go forward. That letter of support, I appreciate that they will put it forward, but there hasn't been a formal proposal put in front of you yet. So, that would be part of the package that would come forward. So, at this point, there's nothing as far as recreation, or tall ships America, or anybody else could look at. Again, grateful to the Harbor Commission, but I think we could put the cart before horse a little bit.
I agree. And just as long as the Harbor, if the Harbor Commission's watching.
Very appreciative.
Yes. We, when we, when we accepted the letter, that was a vote to accept the correspondence, not to endorse the project, or provide capital to back it. So, I don't think we need a vote on anything with that. But, Mr. Gilfelin, I'm sure will bring it back. Mr. Administrator, we have an update on Cynthia Ave related to infrastructure improvements and paving.
Thanks, Mr. President, members of the council. So, I put this on the agenda, so, so this was brought to my attention by residents of Cynthia Ave, and also by the clerk, that this was an issue in front of the council almost nine years to the day, when the council was making determinations on paving streets. One of the issues that came up by the then council was the paving of Cynthia Ave. There was a discussion by the council to initially want to move forward with paving the street, given its current status. So, and then there was a discussion about its current status. There was a directive given to, given to the then DPW director, who had an objection to doing any work on the street, because there are pretty significant drainage issues on that street, which makes it an unaccepted street, given those engineering and drainage issues. So, the council directed the then town administrator and the then DPW director to research that matter and report back to the council, which they never did. So, in putting this back in front of you nine years later, but there was an agreement by the, by the council to direct the DPW garage to grade the street annually, or twice a year, and also fill any potholes. So, I've spoken with the director. He's more than willing to continue to do that as the season approaches. But my ask of you and the council is to redirect myself and the DPW director, so we can come back with an estimate. I'll also, and I know this is not part of this ask, but it should be noted that this is one of many, in the conversations I've had with the director, and I'm sure that you're all aware of, of street issues facing our town. Knowing that it's going to probably be very expensive to bring this street up to town standards. But I think what we need to do is have a conversation about what those standards are, given the fact that Cynthia Ave is not an anomaly in Tiverton. There are a lot of streets that are either accepted, unaccepted, grandfathered. We need to do a lot of housekeeping moving forward. And also, knowing that it's going to get expensive. So, this way, when we're paving streets, we have an idea of if we're going to incorporate some of these streets that have status, and what it's going to cost to bring them up to a town-accepted road. So, again, my ask for you tonight is to redirect myself and the DPW director to come back to you specifically about Cynthia Ave, but also putting on your radar that we need to have a bigger discussion about unaccepted and accepted and grandfathered streets.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Since this is not up for a vote, Counselor Camillo?
Can I add to that?
Absolutely.
So, I recently received phone calls about a neighborhood, and I drove down there, Anthony Way, Faria Way, Peckham Lane, Edmond Lane. It's probably like the last neighborhood in Tiverton. I drove down there, and those streets are atrocious. I wrote a letter to, I wrote a letter to the administrator, asked him to look into it with the DPW. And again, it's one of these things that, is it accepted? Is it not accepted? Is it private? Is it not private? My understanding from the public works director and the administrator is that we have way too many different titles for all the streets that we have in town, right? So, if somebody decided back in the day, it wasn't accepted, right? So, these neighborhoods are all changed over now, right? And one thing is that the people that are living in these neighborhoods, younger families, right, they're all paying the same taxes. So, I think we have an obligation to find a way. If it's not rebuilding it to the town standards, at least make it passable. These neighborhoods that I just referred to, I think if we bring a rescue vehicle down there, like, I mean, it's, it could pop airbags, the fire truck, it's just, I mean, you're smirking, but I'm-
No, I agree with you.
It is private, though. I think we've discussed-
Whether it's private or not, I, I really, I really think we need to open the door and start looking at our streets. And I think some of the problem with Cynthia is that we've rated it so many times, they've actually built the material higher than the driveways, and now we're flooding everybody's driveway. So, I really think this needs to be a bigger discussion for a lot of the roads. This has been going on for years, especially with the private roads, and what's accepted and not accepted. I don't know how we go about it, but I think we need to come up with a plan.
So, I, I agree that we do have a lot of different types of roads out there. And I think that as it relates to the plan too, you think we'll find that some neighborhoods would prefer them to be remaining private, as an example.
That's okay, but me too.
Are we plowing those roads?
We plow, we pick up trash.
See, that's the problem.
Therein, therein lies the issue, is that-
That's what I mean. So, that's why I think the discussion, I mean, this isn't up in the woods where it's a private road, and you're right, people do, if they want to be in the woods on a private road. But this is, this is a neighborhood that gets plowed, trash pickup, and everything else. And who determined, I tried to do a little research, you can't find who determined it was unacceptable.
And I think to your point, Counselor, I think that's the issue. And just, you know, and we can use Cynthia as an example.
Right.
Driving on Cynthia is like driving on the moon. It's, it's a mess. There are some that get town services, such as plowing and trash pickup, some that don't. I do not believe Cynthia is one of those things.
It's not a mixed-up [inaudible].
But to your point, you're right. I think what ended up happening, like what happened nine years ago, was there were promises made. Nothing was ever documented. There was nothing put into policy. You know, I'm going to work with the DPW director based on something with no disrespect to my predecessors, or his predecessor, that never got accomplished. So, I think we need to have consistency on these issues, which has been lacking.
I mean, to that point, we're spending how much on free-brained plow trucks that were going to tear up, literally, like, destroy these trucks going down these roads to plow.
Counselor.
So, it should be something addressed sooner than later.
Now, when these roads are developed, when this development is done, they have to meet some standards for the roads to be accepted. Am I right, Rosemary?
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely right.
So, so, they never went through the stages of getting the road accepted.
I think we're talking about neighborhoods from the 1960s.
Well, that's, and that's the issue, is that it could be 80, 90 years old before the town even had these standards adopted, right?
Could-
I'm not going to even guess that you were around back then.
Yeah, she was.
You were not.
Well, Rosemary, she was. Yeah.
Before we get a little bit off topic, I think, I'd just let Ms. Eva, or Mrs. Eva, address the, the standards issue, and then we can get back on the rails here.
It may have been longer than nine years, but I was on a committee many years ago.
Yep.
We had a street committee formed by the, the town council.
Yep.
And one of our former, he's passed away now, counselors, started, and several were DPW directors that have passed away too.
Yeah.
And our, a former solicitor. And we-
They're all dead.
We spent a lot of time, and you'd be surprised at what we found. And as you say, they're private. Some were just scratched down a piece of paper. The former town clerk, I spent many, many hours in that vault.
I was on the council that morning.
I'm sure you were. And, but-
We've heard that many times.
I was.
And, you know, there's a lot of history behind these things. And I do remember, as the administrator said, you know, on the sand for property and everything, and maybe it wasn't done properly, but the infrastructure on these roads is very expensive, as we say. And the new equipment that we're talking about getting, I mean, is expensive. And, yes, we all pay taxes. But, I mean, we really have to sit down and bring up, and there were legal documents that were supposed to be signed.
Mm-hmm.
Half of the people would sign it, the other half wouldn't.
Yep.
So, they didn't. But some of the roads were taken off, and I'm sure you remember Denise.
I do.
They weren't happy, but they were taken off with what the services provided. So, I'd be glad to help, you know, in any way that I could historically, or, you know.
He used to be a street committee when I first started on the council.
I think that's the last thing we need to be honest, is another committee.
Another committee.
Yes.
I know, but that's what it was.
So-
It was. And then we came up with a list, you know, this was brought up. I don't want to name the people, but in the official list stays in the, in the DPW director's-
So, in all fairness, I think there's been major discussions on roads and streets with the town administrator right now, the water department, and the new highway director, coordinating everything on, when do we fix a street, when do we fix the infrastructure on the street, how is all working together. And I think he's, and real talks about how we can fix things and get it going again. To me, the past is the past. And like I said, these neighborhoods are changing over. These neighborhoods, some of them were from the 60s, early 50s. They've never been accepted. There's never been a plan for them. And I think with some research, we can find a way or something. I'm not asking to rebuild a street from curb to curb. I'm just asking it to make it passable, whoever lives down there, and for our equipment that we're spending a lot of money on, not to get destroyed, whether it's fire or our new plow trucks.
It just takes a lot of money.
So-
It doesn't, it doesn't take a lot of money to, to make a street passable. It really It doesn't take a lot of money to make a street passable, it really doesn't. It takes a lot of money to build from curb to curb, I agree with that, but to make something passable...
Mr. Solicitor, if you want to take us slightly further off track, please.
It doesn't last. I just want to, first of all, caution the council, we're way off the Cynthia Avenue on the agenda. Number two, I will say that taking over roads or voluntarily repairing roads that you do not own exposes the town to a lot of liability, except there is an...
That's fine, then reduce their taxes if they can't get their roads fixed. That's it. It's the bottom line.
I don't know all the facts, but if you live on a private road, you live on a private road. They own the road.
Well, private is different from what accepted in neighborhood stuff, so it's different. We have several different things, I'm going to keep fighting for this.
I'm not arguing with you.
I'm going to keep fighting for this because I think it's wrong.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, I think, Administrator Administrator, since this wasn't on for a vote, I appreciate the update, I know you'll...
I will report back to the...
Report back, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Administrator Jones, discussion impossible vote to approve Narragansett Electric Company's request to extend the use of property at Zero Souza Road as a laydown area supporting the electric transmission line projects in the area, in the area under Article Four, Section Sixteen I.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and as part of your backup, you have a letter dated from Robinson Cole dated September 25th. This was the area on Souza Road that was approved by the council, they're asking for an extension to be able to utilize that area. I am not aware of any issues that have come up during that time, so they're just asking that whatever they're doing to continue, so they can complete the project.
Okay. Counselor Burke.
I believe I may have been the only one who voted against allowing them to use this property, and I will do the same, for the same reasons as before, but I don't believe we approved for them to use it for anything other than their work in Tiverton before.
No, we had that discussion, because remember, to get to Tiverton, they had to start somewhere else, right? So, the lines, the lines don't start at the Tiverton line, right? So, we had that discussion, but I didn't remember that, but that's fine.
Counselor Camillo, you want to say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Counselor Jennings.
I didn't agree with it in the beginning, but it's too late now.
So, they're asking for a possible eighteen-month extension to they, but it says with a possible eighteen...
No, that was...
Oh, that was the original.
They're looking at May of '27, so twelve months.
Twelve months.
That's when they feel that they'll be done.
Based on their law, yes. And the ordinance anticipated that, right? They had initially requested a longer time period, but the council wanted to put a little short leash on it to see if there was going to be any issues during the time that they did use it, and again, as the administrator said, he's not aware of any, so it's...
It's four months more than what they originally asked for.
Yep. Twelve months more.
Twelve. The request is approximately four months more longer than the current estimate.
Estimate, I'm sorry, yeah, sorry.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a vote to approve the requested extension.
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Counselor Burke is opposed. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Bailey, discussion impossible vote to approve probationary firefighter lateral hire under reimbursement Rhode Island General Law forty-five-two-seventy twenty-twenty-five H fifty-nine fifty A and Senate oh-eight forty-nine A not to exceed five thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
So, we have a potential lateral transfer that would like to come to Tiverton from another municipality, municipality, but through that triple law that was passed, they are entitled to seek reimbursement for training costs, gear, relay costs. So, we don't have a line on it to do this, we have one vacancy left in the department, we would like these fully qualified firefighter, EMT cardiac, we would not have someone to the academy. I did look at what it would cost if we sent someone to the academy for thirteen weeks, and it's over seventeen thousand dollars, when you factor in their wages, the cost of tuition, three thousand seven hundred fifty, academy books, their physical fitness gear, so...
Okay. Mr. Administrator, you have a recommendation?
So, Mr. President, members of the council, and I know what you're all thinking, if this law was in place maybe ten or fifteen years ago, we could probably build a new police department and a fire department, but it is the law of the land now.
It's true.
About to go to pavement streets.
At least. It is the law of the land now. I know in speaking with the league, and speaking with our legal counsel, including Mr. Cavazza, Attorney Cavazza, there's a lot of nuance, there's a lot of loopholes with this law, one being there's no enforcement mechanism. I wouldn't recommend to the council that we just not pay this bill, but as it stands right now, if we did not choose to pay this bill, there's really nothing that would be able to stop the city or town, the municipality. I'm sure that there'd be a lawsuit, and that's something that we could, you know, deal with with a solicitor, but as the chief stated, this is going to open the door moving forward. Speaking with the police chief, I believe the original intent of the law was dealing with the police departments, but it is open to public safety, which does include the fire department. I'm speaking with both the fire chief and the deputy chief, I think this is a reasonable expense, the question is where do we take it from? If we're going to ask the chief to take it out of his operating salary budget, we can do that, but I think going forward, I know from the police department, it is estimated that if a police recruit comes over, remember, the fire recruits go to the academy for twelve weeks, the police recruits go to the academy for twenty, so, and that does not include all the outfit and the material. So, a police recruit could cost us thirty thousand dollars.
At least.
And I know the issue, which is being talked about on the league level, is there are no caps, there are, it's a descending or sliding scale over years, but I know, and I'm sure the chief and the deputy chief can speak to, that these are not rumors, that we've heard it, that some departments are asking five thousand dollars, some are asking fifteen, someone asking upwards of fifty. So, it is just the Wild West when it comes to these recruits moving all over the place. This is an untested law, it is being utilized now, but for tonight, having the ability to bring on a probationary firefighter that has passed the muster of the chief for five thousand dollars, knowing that we would spend more than three times that sending this individual to the academy, and the time that it would spend, that we'd spend, and also the overtime expense, I think this is a, this is a good cost savings, but it's something that we need to be cognizant of, but both the police and the fire departments moving forward.
Counselor DeMares.
How long has this person been a firefighter?
So, he's been full-time in the municipality for almost two years, that's where he's coming from.
And is it that municipality that paid for his training?
So, yes, but he didn't, so the reason this bill's lower than what most of them are, as the administrator was saying, is because he didn't have to go to the fire academy through this municipality, he had academy training prior to that.
Oh, all right.
So, that's not saying that the next time...
Could be higher.
A higher bill, because there's no academy cost on this, there's no salary.
That's what my question, okay.
So, there are...
Counselor Camillo, then Counselor Burke.
If you want to go first, Mr. Burke, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor.
He's being nice.
So, what you just said, he went through the fire academy through a different municipality.
So, we don't have to be...
So, which, do we know how long he was with that municipality before he moved through the career?
So, it was a volunteer department, it was a call department that he went through years ago.
Because my concern was he was jumping from town to town.
No, so this was a volunteer department, he went through the state fire academy through, then got hired onto a full-time fire department, and then transferred across. So, if you look at the bill that was provided, there's a lot of cost to it.
So, my other question is more from the solicitor, maybe. Let's just throw assumptions out there. We hire somebody, whether it's this person or not, we pay money to that other town, and this person decides to only stay for two years with us, they still have to reimburse us for any of the costs that are related to this in that two-year period, considering he'd still be probationary possibly, or she?
I'm reluctant to give you an answer because I haven't reviewed the statute because Mr. Cavazza's been handling this matter, so I don't want to give you an answer.
It's very strange.
Technically, they would owe us some, I think technically they would owe us some money.
I would hope so.
And I don't know about probationary period, so that's, you know, some of my questions are...
Would they owe his money?
I...
So, we sent, like, we've sent him for a medical, physical, or psychological, because it's updated, and then there's also our training period here before they counter-staffing, so there wouldn't be a very high cost, mostly, and there would be gear that we would be purchasing.
I have a distinct impression that as more of this happens, we're going to see this state revisit this statute. Counselor Perry.
Yes, didn't we just go through this?
Oh, sorry, my apologies, Craig, I thought you were...
All right, go ahead, Mr. Perry. Thank you for your...
He's lively today.
He's very lively today.
I believe at the beginning of the year, we went through the same thing with Bristol Police Department, correct?
Warren, sir.
Warren.
The one time that we did it, sir, yes, the one time that we did.
Did we pay for that office?
No, we did not. The law was out of effect at the time, sir.
That wasn't in effect.
I just have a problem paying for this. If he comes over and we don't pay, what happens? They could sue us.
They could sue.
This is a no-brainer for the cost.
Question of the mechanism of the law.
And then the attorney fees and...
Counselor.
So, I really believe that this is a no-brainer for the cost of bringing somebody over, but I do have some questions as far as, so, like the cardiac cost, is that mandated by, I know we in Tiverton mandate you have to be an ALS provider, is that mandated by Central Falls that... So, Central Falls hired him, and then as a basic, they sent him to cardiac school. The law says that we're reimbursable for any basic and specialized training, so that falls under the specialized training aspect of it. It works in our favor because now we have the experience of a cardiac with a few years of experience coming over, versus not being able to find a cardiac, or not being able to have it to, out of basic, to go through that process.
And the second thing that could give us, you know, give us some more savings would be, is the gear that we're paying for, he's going to come with his, to be his backup set or whatever.
So, I spoke to the deputy chief over there, and questioned the whole turnout gear thing, because I also have sort of a problem with that, but they confirmed that it is coming with him, so we figured it would be a good set of gear for him to have as a backup set of gear, have a set of gear until he gets measured for his new gear, and the new gear comes in, but it would be a backup set of gear. And we did ask Central Falls...
We're actually saving more than the ten thousand dollars, seventeen or whatever it's under, if you did. We're probably, we're probably, we're saving a lot more than that, we don't have to buy a second set of gear.
Those are just two...
Scott Mask is saying they use, so we're saving money to ask, so, I mean, it is a no-brainer, but it's going to be a problem in the future.
We asked Central Falls for all the backup, all the bits, more than this, to provide backup to the...
And it was nice that they worked with you, too, with the...
Yeah, they technically, so, we have not hired us immediately yet, so based on the law, they have thirty days to bill us once he starts. So, because of the relationship we have with them, they were able to give us this bill prior, so that we could bring it to figure out how we would pay for this.
That was a good faith. So, I would motion approve.
I mean, he does not, he has no, he doesn't have a start date or any cost yet, so this is, it's going to continue on with this.
Counselor Paul.
Mr. President, motion to approve the probationary firefighter lateral hire reimbursement of not to exceed five thousand six hundred forty-eight twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Mr. Administrator, we're going to take this from council contingency or from the overtime budget?
I would say that if you would hire this individual chief, you would take it out of the normal salary budget, correct? If you would hire him today, that's how you'd pay it out of.
Yeah.
So, my recommendation would be pay it out of the chief's, so the fire department's line on for salary.
Okay.
Sure, five, I said, there must be some money in that.
Yeah. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? None opposed.
Thank you.
Counselor Burke, discussion impossible vote on resolution observing banned book week. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the library director, Catherine, is here to come up. So, last week actually was the observance of banned book week, and I asked for this to be on the agenda, because I think today, more than ever, we are facing government intrusion into our lives, into the lives of our families and our kids, by saying they can't have books available to them in their libraries, whether it's a school library and sometimes home libraries. Thankfully, I don't believe it's at home in Tiverton, but I believe the school department in the past has had some people coming for them about issues that are similar in nature. There are not any, unless Catherine has better information than I do, so I don't think there are any libraries in Rhode Island that have banned books or school districts, but the books that are being targeted now are books that are trying to help people understand our history, and a lot of the books are books that might be telling, having a narrative that's important for us all to know, such as slavery, that some folks don't want to put out in the public. They want to just hide what's happened in the past, and say it's okay to read about or watch My Three Sons, but not Roots. One of the books that's on the DOD banned book list is To Kill a Mockingbird.
It's ridiculous.
Department of Defense. They took the, taken the initiative to ban books from their military libraries, their military academies, their schools that they run for kids, military personnel. So, that's why I brought this up, and Catherine, I know you wanted to say a few things as well. Thank you.
Mr. Director.
So, banned book week is an important opportunity to reaffirm commitment to freedom to read and the exchange of diverse ideas, recognizing the week highlights schools libraries' play in protecting intellectual freedom and ensuring that every person has access to books that reflect a wide range of experiences and perspectives. This topic is often discussed in relation to books for children and teens. So, as a public library, we support the parent or guardian's right to choose what their child reads or does not read, and our dedicated librarians and paraprofessionals assist those who ask for help by finding materials that best fit the reader's objectives. So, we ask a lot of questions about what they want to learn about, the types of materials, so that we can best inform them how to choose books for their child or team. We have not had any requests to remove materials in the library in recent memory, however, we do have a policy and process for addressing concerns from Tiverton residents who have in these situations, so I'm always happy to discuss the collection, our selection process, our policy with anybody who has questions, and the library board sent me with a statement that the Tiverton Library Board and trustees celebrated the freedom to read during banned book week last week, and affirms their commitment to the recently passed State Freedom to Read Act and through the library's policies and procedures.
Thank you.
So, with that, I would ask that we approve the resolution before us observing banned book week.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? I, I would have some discussion, so I agree with the statement the library made, you know, I think it is important, you know, the spirit of the law, the way it's written in Rhode Island, but as written on this proposed resolution, I cannot support this. It does take a very hard and sort of polarizing, aggressive stance with the language contained therein, so if the resolution, I think, was more geared towards and in line with the statement approved by the library board, I'd be happy to support it, but as written, I cannot vote for it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm going to support it strictly on the fact that you can do a quick Google search and see, and to me, this does have a little bit of a national level touch to it versus what we deal with in town, but you can do a quick Google search and see books that Democrats ban and books that Republicans ban, and I agree with the director that it should be up to mom and dad to decide what their kid's going to read and not read, you know, we shouldn't be banning anything. We have amendment rights, and we should be following the Constitution and following our rights.
Is there actually a ban?
No.
It's a psychological thing.
So, the Department of Defense does ban certain books from their libraries. There is no library that I'm aware of, and you spoke to us in Rhode Island, that has been asked to ban, well, I shouldn't say it, not that it has been asked to ban it, but it's a growing movement on the part of the federal government, for example, putting pressure on school districts to adopt to a way of thinking just in order to get money. I assume that some of that pressure might be coming down for libraries, because they get some federal money, at least from the state. So, it is an important issue, I think, for all of us to face, especially from a First Amendment perspective.
Further discussion?
I would just add to along the lines of what Counselor Camillo said, you know, to say that the federal government, you know, from one political persuasion or another, may be, you know, tying dollars and cents to curriculum at our educational facilities, or what's available at our libraries, or, you know, heck, even what we do here in town, they do that all the time. They force the states to raise the...
They force the states to raise the age to legally purchase alcohol and tie it highway funding to it. So, it's something that happens all the time, but as far as, I mean, as far as voting for this ordinance or this resolution, if we could strike some things out of this, I'm okay to vote for it.
I personally like how our director is handling the situation. I think, you know, talking to parents and, I mean, it doesn't sound like they're banning everything, and I think, I don't know, at a local level, we're operating just fine.
Just in response, Mr. President, interfering with our First Amendment rights is very different than withholding money to raise the age of drinking to 21.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Administrator Jones, request to appropriate funds from council contingency account number 10206890 to pay vendors related to remediation on Cananica Street and the subsequent lien. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As most of you are aware, there was an incident that took place on Cananica Street that was investigated by the zoning and building office with the assistance of the police fire and DPW. There were some inferred costs, and this, that, that incident or that operation was done under court order, and we have kept a accounting of all of the expenses associated with that. I know that the court order put limits which we're going to compile, which we have done, all the resources, all the town resources that were expended to remediate that area and put it into compliance. However, we were, it was necessary for us to go out and use outside vendors for a backhoe. I know DPW had some equipment issues, so we had to go out and utilize outside vendors. So, I am asking the council to authorize me to utilize council contingency to pay off those outside vendors, knowing that all of the associated costs will be moved towards a lien on that property moving forward. When we recoup that, I cannot say, obviously, but what we want to do is pay the vendors, you know, that the DPW utilized in good faith to come so we can pay that debt.
Mr. Administrator, approximately how much?
I know the lien was $4,000, but I would say anywhere, I would say not to exceed of $10,000. I'm looking at you, Mr. Director.
Yes, sir. Well, I know that all the stuff we've done was 30. I don't think how much was more than 5,000, but we couldn't get the material to Johnston because all of our equipment, as you know, breaks down. So, what trucks literally broke, so I'm at Johnston, so we had to hire trucks to get the garbage to Johnston.
So, those outside vendor costs, $10,000?
I don't believe it was that much, sir. I believe it was more towards 5,000.
Okay. So, I would say not to exceed $5,000?
Yeah.
What are we doing?
Are all the costs in?
Yes.
So, why we go not to exceed eight, split it, just in case.
No, I, I apologize, I didn't expect.
Not at all.
I've got all this documentation, you guys didn't call me up. I know the total was over 30.
And that, that's all of the town expenses. So, I was just, the outside vendors that we, that you needed to utilize.
Yeah, there were two trucks for a day, so.
I recommend to the council not to exceed $7,500.
Okay. So, motion been made by Counselor Burke, do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor DiMederos. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you. Thank you, Director.
Counselor Paul.
All that effort to walk up front.
Counselor Paul, discussion impossible vote to advertise for ordinance related to dog park rules and regulations. Counselor Paul.
Mr. President, this is essentially to codify the rules and regulations within the dog park. This was put together by our solicitor and his team, and I believe it's been reviewed and supported by animal control. The dog park has also seen it, and they have no further recommendations.
And the police chief. He's waving at you from the back.
I missed the email.
David, I do have a question though.
Sure.
Like, how can we enforce that they're vaccinated and licensed in the town? Like, that's almost impossible, right? Just realistically? Because I've been at the dog park. People are in and out. I mean, you really don't.
Essentially, that would be if there were an issue. I don't think the ACO is going to go in there looking for a problem.
No, that's what I'm saying. All right.
Counselor Comito.
So, this is just the advertised, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, we're going to have a discussion about this.
Yes, sir.
In the future?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Counselor Burke.
You are all fired.
Yeah, so licensed in the town, so if I brought my daughter's dog to the dog park, I can't do that.
Why? No. She's from out of town. In the town in which they was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
That's how I took it at first yesterday.
All right, so Counselor Paul, you want to make a motion?
Sure, motion to approve the, what is it? What are we doing?
Advertise.
There you go, motion advertise. I lost my place on the agenda.
Advertise the public.
So, yeah, motion to approve the advertisement for the ordinance related to the dog park rules and regulations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded by several. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Town solicitor, discussion and vote to approve, sorry, town solicitor, discussion, vote and approve to execute the agreement with Rhode Island DOT related to repair, ownership and maintenance of a portion of Lewis Street related to a drainage project.
So, I was contacted by the Department of Transportation at the state level asking for approval of this agreement. Apparently, Lewis Street, where this is, is a town road, but a very interesting and powerful state representative named Jay Edwards, who I used to serve with, apparently convinced we're on DOT that this drainage problem that we have here needed to be fixed by the Ron DOT, even though they don't own the road or the, or the area where this drainage problem is. However, the DOT is willing to fix it, but in order to fix it, they want us to enter this agreement, basically acknowledging that once it's fixed, it will be the town's responsibility, it's not their responsibility.
Of course.
So, once before you are reviewed it, I don't see any issues with it.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve and direct the solicitor to execute the agreement with Rhode Island DOT.
It's actually, it's actually for you.
Oh, it's for me? All right, to direct me to sign the agreement. So, do I have a motion? So, motion by Counselor Burke, seconded by Counselor DiMederos. Any further discussion? Counselor Comito.
Approving us off to talk with the, so if they're going to tear the road up to fix drainage, I think we need to get on board with the water department to make sure, or at least let them know. It's been a major discussion in our water board meetings over streets and roads, getting things fixed. So, I at least, the administrator.
Patrick's pardon.
Part of the board, and I think you'll make communication with them. I think it's a fault, and if they have something, I'm not sure they're going to have the money to do it right away, but at least give them the option.
Is that Stone Bridge, Lewis Street? It's.
It might be Stone Bridge, I'm not sure.
It's.
This is a relatively new development, but part of the, I think, the genesis.
It could be fine, but just a, hey, we're tearing this road up, they're going to open it up. You need to get anything in?
So, the, yeah, it's only a portion, I believe it's, it's the southern portion. Yeah, so this, the genesis of this was the, it was Brookdale Secana Bay, I believe, that was discharging a significant amount of water, and it was running down the street and basically causing a massive issue on the southern end of the street. So, I don't think there's much to fix under there. But I completely agree, and Mr. Administrator, you will reach out.
Take care, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? None opposed. All right. Receipt of town administrative recommendations related to FY25 casino revenue appropriations, discussion and vote to request solicitor to draft appropriate resolution. Mr. Administrator, or please the counselor, if we'd like to go through these items or get a brief synopsis from the administrator?
Mr. President, when the moment comes, I believe after the administrator is done, I would like to ask if we would allow the superintendent to go first? He's been holding out at a lot of our meetings. So, if we could let our guest come up and go when it comes time?
Yes, sir. That's, that's what we'll have counsel. So, just as, as part of your backup, Mr. President, members of the council.
Sorry, deputy.
So, and as you have, you should have in front of you.
Correct.
The requested amount in, if you're looking at the spreadsheet of the gaming amount, as you know, as provided by the treasurer, the town has about $5.4 million in gaming revenue. That does not, that includes the amount that was expended at the last meeting with those emergency appropriations and resolutions. So, and that is also part of this spreadsheet and also part of my backup. The requested amount, if you total it up at the end, which it is totaled, would amount to obviously $5.9 million. So, it was my belief and the director from the council that, as you heard from your department heads and the school department during our last gaming meeting about wants and needs, I'm taking that into consideration. I've made my recommendations to you based on the specific departments to also include the school department, which would, in essence, reduce that number from the $5.9 million ask, knowing that we have approximately $5.4 million available in gaming, to $3.5 million, which would allow the town to keep in the gaming reserve account approximately $1.9 million. Obviously, those are my recommendations. I base those recommendations on the reports from the department heads and also the, your stance that you do not want to spend all this money, which I firmly believe and agree with, that we should not be spending all this money and we should keep some in reserve. Obviously, these are my recommendations. I am, and as I've spoken to several of the council members, I have a pretty tough skin. I understand that this is for you are the policymakers. You tell me and you can tell as through the department heads, I will tell them that we know that, as you just heard from the director and all the department heads, there are a lot of needs. There are a lot of needs. But we need to be expeditious, but also cautious in how we're moving forward. And I think my recommendations move us forward in a positive direction, along with taking into account the, the needs of the town, also building into infrastructure. Also, you'll notice that when it comes to, as we're doing in town hall, taking advantage of all of the town buildings that we need to invest in, when it comes to flooring, when it comes to paint, when it comes to air conditioning, we're not building any more town buildings, at least not in the near future, but we definitely need to maintain the ones that we have. And I will address the, the issue with the schools that came up, and I'm sure the superintendent will, will be able to more than address it. The two that I'm not recommending to you tonight is not a recommendation to say no, it's my recommendation to say not yet. So, and that would come down to the tennis courts and also to the restrooms. I just want, and I say this with the school and the superintendent being in the room, I'd like to work with them to go out to bid, maybe wait until next year into the spring, knowing that no work is going to be done until the students are out of school next year. So, and also that we have ride reimbursement money coming. So, with everything else, obviously, it would be my recommendation to move forward with those expenses, to also include the expenses that they've already expensed with the health and safety issues. But when it comes to the, the only one that I would not recommend to you on, on that list, other than the restrooms and the tennis courts, was the soundproofing for the auditorium. I know it got brought up by the council that we have broken chairs in there. I would much rather have a deeper discussion with the school department and with the council and myself about fixing that auditorium and maybe spending it to get it up to speed. Instead of spending $12,000, let's fix the chairs, let's fix the soundproofing, knowing that is the only town building that we have in town that can house over more than 100 people. So, I think that's something that we need to look into. So, we're having those meetings or we're having a discussion with the public, that we need to have more people in the room, which we've done in the past. We should have an area that has proper sound, has good seating, has good audio, so we can utilize that moving forward. I'd be more than happy to go through any of the specific departments, knowing that many, if not all, your department heads are in the room. There, there was a backup that I did send to you today, which I'm sure the fire chief and the deputy fire chief can address, and there was also a conversation that I had with the rec coordinator about the playgrounds at the Cassett in Bayview. But with that being said, I'll open it up to, I'll answer any questions that you may have or your department heads are in the room as well.
So, before we begin, and I know the council probably looks at this and says, well, we're keeping, you know, we take the administrator's recommendations, we're keeping about $1.9 million in reserve, but I do need to remind the council that we have two bigger projects that we need to plan for. First and foremost is we have only four more payments before we are off of the land that currently houses our recycling facility in the industrial park. And I would hate to see us get into a scenario where, you know, we're running out of time and we haven't taken any activity or action to extend the road, clear the lot for the new area, move that facility, because we have a definitive timeline. Second, this council did go out, we conducted a very lengthy public survey with the public to get feedback on the future state of trash. We do, we do need to hold some dollars in reserve because if we're going to move forward, I think every one of us would be swiftly voted out of here if the net result was to send a bill to every single house to purchase new bins. So, the money's going to come from somewhere. And then the last piece is, as we know, our friends in the school department are running essentially a shoestring budget at this moment, and I think it would be wise for us to keep dollars in the capital expenditure account that are unallocated in the event that something comes up. For instance, a boiler goes at, you know, now essentially closed Fort Barton, we need to make sure that we have the dollars in hand so that they can fix health and safety needs as they arise, because they, those are.
You're saying more money than what the administrator.
No. I'm saying, I'm justifying the, the $1.9 that the administrator is recommending us holding in reserve.
And I would say also, Mr. President, that, that also goes for, you know, not to say that the school has a shoestring budget, the town has a shoestring budget.
Correct.
If anything happens in the town, police department, fire department, heaven forbid, we need to be able to have an emergency fund to address all of those issues.
Roof caves in.
Anything, hopefully.
All right, so I'm going to go, I'll go, Counselor DiMederos, Counselor Comito, Counselor Burke.
We also, you forgot that we have a deficit that we need to figure out shortly also. And that, we are getting $1.5 million back for reimbursement in March, and I think that's when we should address some of the schools' wants and needs. Also, the only thing that I would like the council to consider is, I brought it up last time, the Bogamash rec area and the restrooms. I don't know what it would cost, and I don't even know what the project would entail, but if the DPW director or the town administrator could give us different scenarios for that, because it really needs to be replaced, and we have so many people going there every summer, and it's really subpar. It's really a mess. So, I would like to consider, if it's all right with the council, the administrator, maybe the DPW director, get some kind of plan for that, and it could be all different things, destroying the building, fixing it up, whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
And you kind of agree with.
This is, I think, the benefit of keeping money in reserve, because something like that with Bogamash, I also had a similar conversation with the DPW director today about the clamshell truck. Clamshell truck is that big crane that he uses to clean out the drains. That's something that he's not going to be able to utilize until the spring or the summer. So, if that's something that if the council keeps monies in reserve and the DPW director will continue to go out to bid, and that'd be a similar suggestion that I would make to the council and Counselor DiMederos, that we work with recreation, DPW, we go out to bid to look at what we need to do at Bogamash before we just allocate funds for it.
Yes.
So, this way, we knew, you know, we know the scope of that work, and we come back to you and say, these are the bids, this is how much it's going to cost, similar to what you saw with paving the cemetery. It's going to be all over the map. So, before we allocate funds, we need to have a plan.
Counselor Comito.
So, with like most of the stuff in here, we keep mentioning the word bid, bid, bid. I, I think we've got to start using the word quote, go get quotes before we tie up our money, right? Most of the stuff that we've gone through, we get one quote and then we allocate the money. I don't agree with doing it that way off of, off of one bid. I think we should have multiple quotes and then go out to bid. It's definitely a different process, right? So, I'll use, for example, the air conditioners. We have multiple, multiple departments and buildings leaving air conditioners, and we're all going to different places to get bids, right? We should be, that should, all we should be coming together and we're going to save and save some money by doing it that way. So, we're kind of all over the place between quotes and bids.
If I could address that, Counselor. So, just so you know, what you're doing by doing that or the recommendations are you're giving your department heads and myself kind of a budget, a target price point. We go out to bid with the, probably the exception of like police cars, DPW, and certain fire trucks that are on master price or general or government bids, everything else is going out to bid. This kind of gives us an idea of range, because, and we've dealt with this before, we go out to bid, you allocate, you know, a certain amount of money, it'll come under, that money goes back into the gaming account. It goes over, we come back to you. So, it's my intention to go out to bid on nearly everything, probably with the exception of things that we normally don't go out to bid for because they've already been bid, like police cars or DPW trucks. But to your point with that air conditioning, my, it's my intent, knowing that we're doing police and fire, to go out to bid and get a global bid to do both areas.
Let's just say I agree, we can agree to this.
Let's just say I agree, we can agree to disagree. I still think we should have quotes coming in. I, I still think the process is different from getting the bids. I understand all the state stuff, sole source, I get it all. It's just, you know, running the business is just kind of how I, you know, we're competing against everybody, right? So, I'd just rather see quotes coming in.
I understand. But, and also, but, and again, not to belabor the issue, sir, and I agree with you. But when we don't act on those quotes, those quotes have a shelf life. So, and we've experienced that, especially with construction or contracting work. I come to you and say, I need $50,000 to do a job, then the job changes, and then it becomes a 75 or 100,000 dollars.
Well, so it's the same thing that, you know, speaking on the second half of that is, all the funds that just sat stagnant for over the years on these projects. So, I'm hoping that-
Prevent that.
We stay on top of this-
Yes, sir.
And get our projects completed, right? So, I mean, I'll go back to the example of the 100,000 dollars for the tennis car, eight, nine months, we didn't do anything with it, and now we want to change our plan and we're coming back again, right?
Yes, sir.
So, I, I just like to keep it moving, keep the quotes, keep the stuff coming in, make this and finish what we're supposed to do. I have no doubt that we're not going to finish our projects, especially with this council. But I got a few more things that I'd like to change if I, once we get to those points, just some ideas.
Throw them out now.
Yeah.
This is general discussion, sir.
All right, so personally with the fire department, I think it's a big deal that the training. So, you recommended a vehicle for the fire marshal and-
I don't know. I guess.
And, and the pumper, right? So, I think it's important that the training division has a new vehicle. The vehicle they're driving now-
No, 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 asking procedurally if we should have motions. I think we get them all out and then we can go through them.
All right, so the vehicle that, our training division, the new position that was put in place per contract, our, our training officer is driving a vehicle that we once in the fire department deemed unsafe, right? So, we took it off the road and we put it at the highway department, and we stuck it in a corner because it wasn't safe, because we had fumes coming in the car. So, the highway department needs a vehicle, so what do they do? They take the car and they repair it and they fix the car. So, we stop a training division and then the training division needs a car, so we take the car, we give it back to the fire department, right? So, this practice is just-
The car's total junk, sir. It's total junk. So, just so you know, I mean, speaking with the chief and the deputy chief, their plan moving forward is to obviously replace the OIC car, which is new car three-
Yes.
And replace the fire car, which is car four. Move the fire marshal's Tahoe, which is the better of the two, down to the captain and completely get rid of that vehicle.
Yes.
That's their plan, which is what I-
Which I just broke down again today. So, so what I would like to do is, it talks about getting a new pump, getting a new tanker engine. We talked about possibly selling the tank truck. So, instead of maybe taking the money from, from gaming, whatever we get from revenue, I know rules and regulations has got to go back to, if, if there's a way we can take that money from the revenue from the tank truck and keep it within the fire department and purchase the correct vehicle for the fire marshal, I mean, for the training division. So, in other words, take, take the sale of the tank truck, replace the tank truck, take the sale of the tank truck, and, and whatever we get for it, I'm hoping over 100,000 dollars, somehow either take some of that money, take the cost of a new, new engine and take the, and take the 79,700 and put it towards the purchase of the training division.
So, my only question, I guess this would be a question for the chief and the deputy chief. I don't know how long it's going to take to get the, if you authorize the new pumper.
So, my second thing is, is just like we would do with rent reimbursement, pay for this purchase, and then when we get the sale, take it and put it back into gaming.
Quick question, Councilor Camino, just so I follow, and so those at home can follow too. The new pumper that was requested, that would be three years out from now, that would effectively replace the one you're talking about, the tank truck? Okay. Sorry, didn't mean to derail. I don't know as much about fire operations as Councilor Camino.
Well, and if I don't, Mr. President, just, I'm not seeing any like acknowledgement from the chief or the fire chief, so, or the deputy chief or the fire chief. So, to answer the question, if-
Yes or no?
Twenty-eight to 32 months.
Yeah.
And it was a decision that we would make at the time based on the status of the fleet.
Is, okay, so you haven't made a final determination of taking that pumper or selling it or any of that, or at this time?
Three years is a long time, things have changed.
Okay. And I, that's just important for the council to know.
So, what car would the trainer be driving now?
Right now, he drives a 2014-
Okay.
Sorry, 2014 Chevy Equinox.
All right, but we're buying the fire marshal a new car.
Yes. So, the initial intent of this plan was to Chevy Tahoe to replace car three, which is the shift commander, and the Silverado would replace the Tahoe for the fire prevention, and then the fire, the captain in charge of the training would have the Tahoe from the fire prevention.
And how old is that car?
2017 with about 116,000 miles.
Replace, replace both transmissions in each car, right?
Yes, both cars have had transmissions replaced in them.
Are those gas engines?
The, just to-
Five-three, active fuel management?
I don't know. I don't, they don't know.
Okay.
Masses last night. Masses last night.
Sorry.
So, the Chevy Equinox is most likely completely dead and gone now. Most likely suffered major engine damage this, on Friday. It was towed to the garage today. Likely the timing chain is gone. Hasn't been officially diagnosed, but most likely if we were to keep that car, it needs a new motor, so.
If we truly think the timeframe is too long on the buyback and the money coming back, then, I mean, I would recommend that we just put the 79,000 back in for the purchase for the second bid.
Any further suggestions, Councilor Camino? I'm just keeping track of them here.
So- Why don't we stick with fire, and then we can move on to schools? I think we should do it by group, Mr. President. Just my recommendation to the council.
Okay.
Do it by group.
I'm amenable.
The council discuss.
So, I think there's another issue that's, that's not even on this paper, I believe, with the fire department, and generators. We have a couple of generators that are ready, ready to be inoperable at two of our fire stations. I think the deputy can elaborate a little bit on it, but it was right to my attention. Couple of weeks ago, we were at a meeting and we were talking about generators. I asked about the generator for the radio system, and we have two other generators that I found out recently that are on their way out for fire tomorrow. And if we have quotes or estimates, I would think somehow we try to add that into game and to get, make sure that our stations have standby power. So, the, I think back in April, we had an issue with the generator station three on Crandall Road. It was doing its weekly test and was smoking up the entire neighborhood. So, they reported it. We had it checked out by our company that does all the maintenance agreement, no, not by the maintenance agreement company, they recommended that station for replacement. At the time, the discussion, I believe, with the administrator, who was the active administrator at the time, he asked me to get all the generators at the three stations looked at. We got them all looked at. Station one in East Road is also recommended for replacement. At the time, we discussed also including Town Hall into this. Lightship, who's our company, has not been very responsive with the Town Hall please of a generator, looking for a quote for that. They stated that two fire stations would be easy because they direct replacements. I have not heard from them. It's kind of, kind of fell off, and then I was reminded that the generators are having an issue, so.
Yeah, I was going to ask, why wasn't it put in your initial ask?
To be honest with you, I forgot about it.
You just forgot about it.
It was, it was-
Yeah, I know, I know.
I was hoping to get the information from our company that we deal with all the time, but-
And that was to tie in with the one at Town Hall, too.
Right, but, and then they just haven't been responsive with us with getting us generator quotes. So, I contacted another generator company. They're actually coming out to the fire stations October 23rd to look at station two and station three for recommending replacement for those two, station one and station three.
So, do you have, so do you have some kind of idea of what it would cost?
Titanic.
Jesus.
I am not an expert on-
Okay, I was just wondering, because I don't know how we-
If we, if we were going to discuss, I would ask Councilor Camino on his opinion of that car.
Oh, that's my question.
I think if we left the contingency of at least 25,000 dollars for both stations to be done, I think it'd be more than enough money.
Total?
Total, on, on what their needs are. I mean, we're not talking big generators here, but we're just-
How big are they?
Huh?
How big are they?
The one at station three, I believe, is an AKW, and I'm not sure the size of the one at station one, but I don't think it's any big.
I think, yeah, so it's not-
Yeah, those aren't super large.
It's not very big.
Yeah.
So, I think, you know, I'm not sure about the insurance end of it, like bond and all that stuff, that, if that drives the cost up, but what I'm saying is, I think, you know, a reputable company would be getting them both done for somewhere in that 25,000 a month.
Okay.
So.
Councilor Burke.
So-
Sticking with fire.
Now, I'm going to take us back to where we started when you first-
Okay.
Called me out, because I'm not going to go through these. I, I respect that the administrator has met with his department heads and, and come up with recommendations based on the total needs. And I appreciate all the needs for the fire department, and I think we're going to hear again from others, too. But even though we have gaming money coming in, it's not an endless pot of money, and I really want, what I'm hearing is a lot of what we've been doing, while we might need this, we might need this. And I'm not saying they're not real. At the same time, what I'm looking for, even next spring, I'm not looking for new requests to be coming in, one meeting and then another meeting and then another meeting. I'm looking for a capital plan, whether it's two years, three years, five years, so all those things can be built in, and you can prioritize which ones come first. I'm comfortable with what's before us here. I also, while I appreciate the council president's desire to move to the mechanical trash bins, I'm not there. So, I'm not looking at saving money aside for that purpose. Now, the council may decide to do that, but I've heard, and well, I'm not going to go into that, because that'd be off subject. But, and certainly we know we need to build out a new recycling center. But again, that needs to be part of that capital plan. The only thing, and these are small items, but in the police department, the, the painting and flooring, and I appreciate we keep our, and we should, up to date, so to speak. We also have a committee working on a potential new public safety complex, so a lot of these items could fall into that, but I don't know where we're at, so maybe at a future meeting we can talk about that. So, it's hard for department heads, I know, to swallow that I wanted this, and I'm going to get this, or maybe this this time around, but that's how this works.
All right, Councilor Janik.
So, I do agree with a lot of what you said, and I, I just also would like to say with the fire department, we did get your email today with the savings for the pumper, if we are to go that direction, a discount of 18,966 dollars and 69 cents.
69 cents.
So, there's that extra-
I'm sorry, I sent that today, but I literally received that late last week.
That's all right, it was good news, so that's, that's always, that's always happy to get, so just pointing that out, that that's a little bit of a, a discount over the dollars that we have here. And I also do respect our administrators prioritizing these items. It's not easy. And I would like to see kind of a plan, kind of a must-have, and, and things change, but to do it for like a one, two, three-year must-have, would-like-to-have, nice-to-have type of thing, so that we could kind of prioritize these items a little bit easier.
So, if I can just echo on Councilor Janik's piece, and I'm glad to see the treasurer's here, because you probably have more up-to-date information than I do. I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we were to go forward, obviously, we'd get the 2.7% savings over the purchase price. Madam Treasurer, if-
I did not get that email, so.
All right, so maybe, just off the cuff, obviously, we know where interest rates are at, right?
You mean financing?
No, I'm not talking financing.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about allocating and then playing the arbitrage game, because if we put the full 690,000 dollars for the pumper away today, and we rolled, for instance, one year CDs at-
Or in like three, three quarters.
So, 3.75%. So, in essence, if by the time we take delivery, we've actually made money on the money we've allocated.
Possibly.
So, I just, I sent that just as an option.
So.
I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of the option, if you paid a fund, if you paid half, you paid 25%.
Paying it up front.
I, on that, I'm sorry?
No, I'm talking to-
Okay. I mean, on, on something like that, if, you know, if we're, if we rolled almost 4% over three years, by the time we take delivery, that gives us excess capital on the money we allocate, rather than it just sitting there, or rather than giving it to a company and hoping they show up in three years with a truck. So, that's just my thought.
I'll add to your thought, then we can move on.
Yes.
My thought was actually just the opposite. I, I would almost at that point say to provide half of that 690 tonight, which would then free up 345, 492 from the total number tonight. That's where I would say we could hold, maybe look at the Bogomash bathrooms and some of these other pressing projects that we've been kicking the can down the road. I'm all for a five-year plan. Half the problem with this town is we're 10 years behind in a five-year maintenance plan, so.
Well, and not, not to mention, Councilor Paul, we've done the five-year plans before, and then the council changes in two years.
I've been on the fire department for 34 years. I can't tell you how many five-year plans I've worked on.
So, you've got a 35-year plan.
Right, so they never come to fruition. It's, I don't, I don't care if you prioritize something or put it, you know, in three years, that the funds never come after the, they just never come. Something always changes, and they say, oh, not this year, not this year, not this year. So, the five-year plans, and like I, I think I, we said this a couple of meetings ago with the administrator, and we both, you know, the stability with the administration, you know, we, we kind of went, we put that in, into accountability, into the account here, and how do we make the five-year, and how do we stick to it? How do we write it up so we stick to the five-year plan that a council doesn't come up and say, I don't agree with that, three years into it, and we change it again, and we change it again? This is what's happening in the town of Tivana. We, we keep changing things. This is why the apparatus and the equipment has fallen behind, not only just with the fire department, but looking at public works, right? And, and we keep saying, not this year, not this year, not this year. So, again, we're going to take a hand-me-down car that's already had a transmit, over 100,000 miles in it, and we're not going to do it right once again, and just put a Band-Aid on something and wait another year or wait for another. I, I like Councilor Paul's idea of if we pull and put 50%, I don't like paying for a full piece of apparatus that we're not going to see in three years, because you never know these companies. These companies could be going out of, out of business in no time, right?
But can we do it that way, though? With, with the company, can we give them?
That's one of the options in, in the email.
I didn't get, I didn't look at that email today.
The email I sent you, if you do 100%-
You sent it today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't look at, go ahead.
75%, 50% and 25%. Or 0% and just pay when the truck comes in, too, that's also an option. But there are discounts.
If you pay a fund.
If you pay a fund. But like John, the council president is saying-
Well, now I know what John's talking about.
There's, there's arbitrage there for us in our favor if we don't take the discount, because the discount is not, it's not 4%, it's 2.7%. Council, or, I'm sorry, Councilor Dimodaris, I don't know if you were still on?
No, I'm, I just had that question.
So, I appreciate that we always kick things down the road. I think a big part of that was because of the way this town is, because of our financial down, meeting budget and budget process, because of the old referendum, budgeting process, which led to lean budgets.
Yeah.
Which led to not paying, spending on capital. We have had the opportunity over the past few years to use casino funds. I just argue that we continue to use those wisely and make sure that we do it in a planful way. I think I said, you know, Patrick, the one, two, three, five-year plan, whatever makes sense. I, I don't have a problem with the five-year plan, because knowing that, and I know the School Department and the School Committee has this right. They submitted a five-year plan, but they have opportunities to update that plan based on changing needs. It also means that if, if we put something in the five-year plan and some other priority comes up, you might say, okay, we do have to wait on this other piece. Because when you rate it on a scale of one to five, five being the highest priority, well, this comes down to a three or a two. So we go with the fives. I, you know, I think we have to have, and I understand that council change, that council change. At the same time, you still have to have a planful way of budgeting, whether it's budgeting operations or budgeting capital.
And needs change.
Needs change.
Councilor Perry, you've been oddly quiet.
Yeah, I'm just listening.
Okay.
Taking this all in.
We just, we just listened to testimony from the Fire Department saying, you know, we don't know what's uncertain if we're going to sell a tank truck in three years, because the needs could change, right? So we just, we just had that discussion again. So already, within 20 minutes of sitting here, we're.
Well, things do change, that's.
That's what I'm saying, so.
Well.
We have to make the decision at some point to do it right.
I think, I think things have changed since the casino money came into.
Correct.
Operation. And I think prior councils have done a great job with casino money, is, you know, buying these one-time expenditures. The ones we have in front of us right now, you know, do we really, and I would like to see, and I spoke to a couple of the councilors on this, that I'd like to see more bids come in on these items. So we've got one right here for the F6D liftgate plow for, it's $115,000. Is that going to be the actual price of it? Or we're just going to give you $115,000 and we don't know what the price is going to be?
But it comes back to, like.
It does come back, but meanwhile, we're losing interest on that money that's going out. We're allocating the money.
No, it stays, I mean, no.
Well, it stays in the account until the bill comes in.
Yeah, it stays in the account until the bill comes in.
But I think if we had more accurate bills that we're going to pay, we'd be able to spend money, allocate the money in different directions.
If I could piggyback on that, and again, I'm trying not to bully other things so we can get moving, I think some of the apprehension, and I don't disagree, because I've made this clear myself, I would love to see actual quotes or estimates, whatever we want to call them, for the work. Some of that goes back to what we've had to deal with in the past with appropriating $500,000, and the job only costs 200. I'm not going to get into all that, because I'd hopefully, we could, we could all move forward from that. If you look at what happened already, $42,000 was saved. That's, that's actually pretty close from the last allocation with Public Works. I wouldn't call that too much of an overshot, 42,000 in that case there. There was a whole bunch of variables there, but.
It's just a suggestion, so.
I don't disagree, but then we're voting every other meeting for stuff like that.
Mr. Solicitor.
So I just want to clarify, and maybe the treasurer could correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're doing tonight, once you come up with a list, you're authorizing the departments to go out and authorizing to get this information that you were looking for. We're not spending any money. You're authorizing to say, we approve of these projects in concept, right? Up to a certain amount.
Correct.
To the extent that, once I do have to go to bid, and all these things have to go out to bid, except for things that may be on the master price list, but all these projects have to, under state law, have to be put out to bid. So you'll get a bid back, and you'll get to authorize, and you'll appropriate the money that you've authorized. It could be less.
Right.
It could be more. But they don't know when to be given, because they don't want, they don't know what projects they want to move forward on. They're looking for guidance from you, from, yes, approve of these projects. These are our 1 to 10 projects. Price, right, those are, these are our projects for all these departments that we want to do. And then you're authorizing it tonight by the resolution, and then you're going to have to file a bidding process that's out there. So no money's going to be spent until they come back. It might be a contract you have to approve or whatnot, but so that's, that's. Excuse me, I wanted to familiarize myself with the process.
I'll make it.
No money's going to be spent. They need authority to go out and even get that, get those bids. That's what they're looking for. So you may say, I don't want you to bid on a tennis court, I get it. You know, I'd rather, you can, you can, you can say, we're not going to, we're not going to.
Well, it's expensive.
We're not going to authorize that project tonight. We're not going to authorize, we'll do something else, or you're not going to do it at all.
We're going to buy it, we're going to buy it.
So nothing is, you know, this is just a starting, but they need somewhere to start.
All right, so.
But with that said, we go out and we get these quotes and we get the bids. Because of like HJAC pricing, we get it from master price agreement, all that stuff.
So you know.
And then they expire between meetings, because they're good for 3 days, they're good for, I mean, it makes it very hard, and I think I can speak for all the departments, that it makes it very hard to get accurate bids when they expire in the meantime.
I want to differentiate though between a bid and a quote. So bid is a legal process that Mike just spoke about. It's a legal process that we have to put out the specs for whatever it is that we're purchasing, and say, here, world, whoever wants a bid on this can give us that, or we can choose three or whatever off the master price. That quote is simply to help us get to a dollar amount here to give you up to, so perhaps, in the future, Patrick might want to throw things at me, is, as a department head, I say, okay, well, the quotes that I am getting come out to 125,000, I'm just looking at the DPW, this is on the top of my list, for the liftgate plow, 125,000. Well, maybe I add 10% to that, to, to take care of knowing that. And I say that, you know, the bids came in, the quotes came in at X. I'm going to put 125 plus another 12,5 in there, because I know that that might not be accurate in a month or two, if you give me permission to pay for, to buy it.
And certain purchases, though, become even more difficult because of availability.
Right.
So if we have vehicles being held for us, these companies, whether it's Fire, Police and DPW, these companies don't want to sit on vehicles, particularly availability. It's, it's hard. And then the HJAC stuff, we have, the Towne Tivin's part of that, and that is a bidding consortium that actually takes care of that, against that.
But again, if we have a plan, which we haven't had the opportunity to do as much in the past, we can say, well, we know you're going to need a new pumper truck in five years. Okay, so in five years, we're looking at whatever that costs, a million dollars. And I don't know if I'm right, close to it. And, you know, do an escalation factor, because five years out, it's going to be 1.2 million, okay? So that the administrator now knows that, okay, I have to find that money in five years. So somebody else has to give up something for right now. That's part of the planning process, so that instead of waiting till the last minute, so to speak, to go out to find something that's available, now you can be planful in looking at that time horizon, unless something happens to that truck.
I do agree with you, but unfortunately, the council changes very often, and it makes it hard to follow. I do have to.
That's why I think we should have four-year terms.
I agree.
So I have a question for the solicitor. Pick on the pumper, because it's in front of us. Let's say we authorize 690,985 for the pumper. Then it would be, I'm assuming the administrator's discretion, if we're going to stroke the check for 100% and save 2.75%, or we're going to cut the check for half now and hold half behind? Or we're not going to cut a check at all to them, and we'll pay you when the truck shows up? Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
That's, I mean, that's what, that's what the administrator's there for, to run the day-to-day operations.
I just wanted to, I wanted to make that very clear, because there were some questions, so.
Mr. President.
Councilor Paul.
I'm going to do something extremely bold, and of course, there'll be more discussion, but I am going to motion to approve the town administrator's recommended expenditures for the gaming revenue in the amount of $3,561,130, as listed on his. Summary sheet.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any further discussion?
That includes the gaming, or the schools.
Correct, well, I have an opportunity to address the council.
Yes. Because we have a second, yes, we have a discussion.
Second discussion.
Yeah, Fire Department's monopolizing our time.
See you later.
Superintendent.
Thank you, it's President, Vice President, council members.
Seconded by four people.
As a young man, new to the Towne Tivin, the gaming revenue seems like a great opportunity for the town and a good problem to have. I understand that the town administrator is recommending the School Department's capital budget request minus the tennis courts, the high school and middle school restrooms, and the soundproofing of the Lord of Trining High School. The total recommendation represents 65% of the total gaming revenue. I understand the decision to not expense all of the gaming revenue. I think that is a wise decision for the Towne Tivin. But please know that the town administrator's recommendation represents 27% of the School Department's request and represents 12% of the total $3.5 million that is being requested by all town departments. We would ask that the School Department be given the same consideration as our town municipal partners in your approving of this allocation.
Councilor Dimoderos.
I don't know if you've looked in the past, but the School Department has gone more than the town of casino money up to this point, and I think that was what I've been looking at, that we've been putting off some town needs. And, and, and no one ever said that you get 50 and we get 50. Well, it's all ours, okay, so let's not do it that way. But we have to look at the needs of the entire, and as far as not buying plow trucks or pumpers or whatever else the town needs that's essential to safety, and we've been putting off some of this for a while now, I think that it's more than fair what we're doing tonight. We're also saying that in March, we're going to relook at your tennis courts and the restrooms, and the 1.5 million that you're going to get back from reimbursement is more than likely going to, to, to be some of these projects. So you are going to get more than you're getting now. And I think this is more than fair. The town's been putting off a lot of essential stuff, and I think we need this now.
Yep. Mr. Superintendent, just to cut you off, again, don't take this in any way, shape, or form with disrespect. I know you're new on the job here, so I can certainly see where you're coming from, looking at the numbers and saying, hey, well, you know, the Fire Department's getting this, DPW's getting that, it looks like the School Department's getting the shaft. But I, I can assure you that, you know, since the casino money was done by ordinance this way, this council prior, well, not even, not even this council, prior councils have definitely gone out of their way to make sure that we've put money behind the School Department, and in some instances, unfortunately, to the detriment of the municipal side. And so I know we're trying to correct some of that balance now, because there has been a lot of deferred purchases and maintenance on the municipal side. So that's essentially where I would assume the administrator's coming from with these recommendations. It is in no way, shape, or form a slight on the School Department.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. President, Councilwoman Dimoderos. My statement in identifying 12% of the total 3.5 is not an assumption of the values or priorities of this council. Simply a matter of fact, that 27% of our requested budget is being recommended, representing only 12% of the total request. I appreciate the reminder that the School Department has the opportunity to come back to the council for a capital request this spring, and we'll certainly do so.
Thank you, and, and I do want to, one other point, too, because again, you, you've inherited a scenario, which obviously you didn't create, where there is going to be things that are going to come up, right? We saw it last year, where it was, you know, we have a boiler that doesn't work at, you know, Fort Barton. We have a heating system that doesn't work at the Middle School or at Ranger, and we need to get those fixed. And so it's, I, I, at least from my perspective, I want to make sure that we're in a position where, you know, if something, again, crops up that's directly related to health and safety for the School Department, we can cut the check and take care of that.
Well, I appreciate that reminder, thank you, sir.
Mr. Haskins, quick question.
Yes.
The touch views, which was actually put off prior, and was a touchy subject. How many is 195 going to get?
Twenty-three.
I was converted because you allowed me to talk to boots on the ground.
Yeah.
And when I was able to talk to the boots on the ground, and they told me that these things are interactive and way more productive.
My memory suggests 23, but I could be off.
Yeah, I think John's right.
You are correct.
Was it 20?
I think it's.
I saw different quotes, that's why, there was different numbers.
Yeah.
And I have gotten some calls from competitors. So we will, we will compare the competitors here, but I believe your answer, President, is.
Yeah, it's right here.
Because I thought I saw different numbers in there, so. If you don't have it now, we, we can touch base, that's not a big deal.
I believe that is accurate, but I would need.
I could be making it up entirely, too.
No, 23.
I wrote 25, so.
I have a cost here.
So 84.78 gives you 22,000.
1,900 each.
$1,900 each?
For each touch view, 65-inch. There is an additional charge for the surge protector, there is an additional charge for labor, 75 per unit, so.
So it's like $2,300 apiece?
That's correct.
All right, so you're getting like 85, so basically, every classroom's going to wind up with these.
That is correct.
That's pretty excellent. Councilor Janik?
I just wanted to confirm the money that's coming back from Ride. You're saying 1.5, but that's going to be in total to what is already in that account?
No, I guess it's not 1.5, it's 1.2, right?
1.2.
1.2.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wrote 1.5.
It is, it is.
That will be total.
Total, including what we have on hand today.
What we have in there, okay.
Yeah.
1.16?
No. Yeah, Denise.
Madam Treasurer.
It's not what, it's not what's in there, it's.
What are interest rates at?
Yeah.
We're getting 1.2.
Depends, okay. So the reimbursements right now, as we stand, are being held, because originally, they were going to be, you were going to reallocate them to the School Department.
Right.
So right now, we have 706,000. In March, we're going to get another 456,000. So that's going to give us 1.163 million.
Okay.
In reimbursements.
Okay.
Now, while it has not been discussed with me directly, I have heard rumors that those funds may be used to help offset the deficit.
Where's Christian, that's the quarter of a night.
Completely separate conversations.
No rumors at all.
Absolutely.
Between having the money to fund another project, and having the money to mitigate the deficit.
Well, we don't have, we don't have a plan for the mitigation of the deficit.
Right.
And we also have the casino money sitting there also.
What casino? Yeah, right.
We're saving 1.9, with, there'll, there'll be money.
Reserving.
Reserving in the casino money also.
I just don't want.
No.
Anybody to think there's a million and a half dollars sitting there.
Well, I, I didn't even bring up that that would be the deficit.
Right.
Because the resolution right now, we cannot spend that on the deficit. We can only spend, the resolution states it goes back to them.
Right, you'd have to change.
Yes, we'd have to change the whole, yeah, Mike said it.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Janik, I didn't mean to interrupt your thought.
No, that was my, no, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure, because I was not understanding further conversation.
All right, so we have a motion on the, on the floor, seconded by.
You guys good?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Superintendent. Seconded by basically the entire council. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Councilwoman Camino abstention?
There's more information, I thought you had more information for the.
That was the discussion part.
You'll have a second, Mike, the resolutions.
Yeah. Okay, Town Administrator, discussion update and vote related to Walgreens' decision to discount charge for pay-as-you-throw trash bags to authorize the Town Administrator to take all appropriate action.
What does that mean?
The Administrator's about to tell you.
Just, so I received an email from the Treasurer through Way Zero that the Walgreens was not going to, or that they weren't going to pay the price of the bags for the pay-as-you-throw bags. So that cost was going to be rolled back onto the town, because they were going to buy themselves in less money. That issue has been resolved, Walgreens has seen the light, so this is no longer an issue.
Okay.
All right, this has been withdrawn. With that, I'd like to make a motion to go and to close, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing for the good of the order.
Thank you.
From the Administrator. It is important to note that if anybody is going to be going to the town's website, it will be launched next week. New and improved, navigable, and excellent. And thank you, Mr. Administrator, for spearheading that project.
I want to give a shout-out definitely to Mr. Robert, our tax assessor, because he has been the, he is the webmaster, so to speak. He has been diligently working on this project since its inception. So he was the one that reminded me to remind you, so we could remind everybody. The website should be launched next week, updated with new features, so stay tuned.
Does it make coffee?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Does it make coffee? No.
It plays jazz, though.
Does play jazz.
Soundtrack provided by Mr. Rudo. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session. Solicitor Marcelo, Rhode Island General Law, forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, two, litigation NC twenty thirteen, double oh, eighty-seven. Town of Tibbeton V LAL Construction Company, discussion and update on litigation and potential consent judgment settlement. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselor Burke, roll call vote, Counselor Comito. Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Janik. Counselor Dimoderos.
Yes.
I'm a yes, Counselor Paul.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes.
We are now in closed executive session.